Okay, your microphone's on. Could everyone take your seats, please? Gee, it got quiet. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. And at this time, would everyone please rise for the invocation? And Doug Pratt, would you please come forward and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, council members. Thank you for the privilege of opening this meeting by praying for you. God, we gather here with gratitude for the tremendous blessing of living in this great part of the world. And we gather here with gratitude for this wonderful country we live in, a place of laws and freedom. Lord, we want to pray for our nation, and especially for our president and our congress and our military leaders facing some really difficult and tough problems in a strife-torn world. And I also want to pray for these council members. I thank you for raising up these men and women and giving them authority to lead us. I pray that they will be people of integrity, that their decisions might be made with honor, with listening clearly to the issues, and thinking accurately, and speaking effectively. I pray that they might be given the richest of wisdom, and that this meeting and all that is done here in this community might enhance. This is a great place to live. I pray this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Slakka, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin. Here. Councilwoman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simons.
Here.
Councilman Longcart.
Here. All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
All righty. Okay, at this time, we're going to take public comment on agenda items, on agenda items only. If it's on there on our agenda and you want to talk about it, please come forward.
All right, yeah, well, we're going to buy a church. Hey, Rick Steinmeier says we're going to buy a church.
Hallelujah.
And we're going to rent it back to him for $100 a month. And we're going to pay the electric bill and the water bill. What a deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. My name's Brian Spina. I am the new owner alone with my mom and dad of Southwest Florida Performing Arts here in Benita Springs on Benita Beach Road, and also a new member of the community. I moved here a few months ago. I was asking for the approval on the farmers market and culinary market. The culinary market is on the agenda with the farmers market, and that will only be one of the Fridays throughout the month for the culinary division, and the remainder would be the farmers market. We originally had this on Saturday and Sunday, and due to the city's request, we moved it. So Friday was the day, and I'd like to ask you for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward? Nope? Okay, so we will go ahead and close public comment at this time. And we are to proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation here. Bob Mills, would you come up here for a minute? And would you go ahead and bring your lovely companion there with you? Would you want to come up too? Come on up. Come on.
Just bite a little.
I say your wife, I thought you might brought your girlfriend instead, so I won't embarrass you like I am right now. Everyone, this is Bob Mills. Oh, careful.
Hold on, Bob.
It's a little unstable.
That's right, it counters that way. So is this council. Anyway. Just coincidence. You're quite welcome. You're quite welcome.
I like that, huh, Bob?
Your limitations, isn't that right, Bob? Bob was one of our first... You were one of our first LPA members, weren't you?
Yeah.
You mean, right there at the beginning. Second one, there you go. And I have to tell you, he served with great dignity. He's an intelligent man. He did such a great job for this community. When we first started out, it was... We didn't have a comprehensive plant at all, except for the one that Lee County lent us. And they went through that whole thing. It was quite the process, and he served for many years there. And Bob, because of this, I'd like to... In your recognition of your many years of dedicated service to this community, the community I know that you love, on the local planning agency, your knowledge, your expertise, and your volunteer spirit has been invaluable to our community. Bob, you served without pay and without any really credit or recognition. Today, we're finally going to give you that recognition. Thank you so much for everything you've done for us.
You said it, "without pay." Where's the money? I couldn't resist that.
That's okay. That's okay.
I miss it.
Well, we may have opening here while I put you back on there. We always need somebody.
I'd make my replacement. I think she's great. She's been in the... She's been in the office any number of times. She spoke eloquently on issues.
Very good. Very good.
Well, anyway, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if you want to serve on another committee, we've got lots of room. Just let us know.
I've got to get to where I can walk.
On the count of three. One, two, three.
That was the best ever, right there. All right, you go to it.
Hands five thirty, you're late. You look good. Thank you, Bob, for all your work. Thank you for putting it up with us. Bob, congratulations.
Come on back, Bob. The water's good.
Take your time, man. Peter Simmons, by the way.
You know us down here. Bless you, Bob. Speedy recovery, my friend.
You'll forgive me if I walk out, but I got a dinner date with a lovely birthday party for a 50, early 50s lady, and she's single, guys.
Okay, then.
She looks good.
That's fantastic. Live life, sir.
Sounds like, never mind. We have to get through this. And now, this time, B-Pat, would you please come forward, please? And this is going to be a proclamation for Industry Appreciation Week. B-Pat has been... He's been a great friend of Benita Springs and to Lee County and to Fort Myers. He's with the regional partnership, and he represents it well. And so, it's a great pleasure to... Whereas industries and businesses within the city of Benita Springs and Lee County are vital to the community economic development base, and whereas the city of Benita Springs and Lee County's existing industries are the key to a prosperous future, and whereas the expansion of these industries accounts for the majority of new jobs created, and whereas our industry and business community improve the quality of life in the city of Benita Springs by supporting and sponsoring multiple educational, cultural, and recreational programs, and whereas public knowledge of the contributions made by industry is essential to the maintenance of a good community and industry relationships, now therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., on behalf of this city council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 16th through the 20th, 2013... You only got four days.
I'll extend it. You're the mayor.
That's all right.
Mayor, you can make a line.
I will extend it to two, three days. No, never mind. Industry Appreciation Week in the city of Benita Springs, and encourage all residents to pay tribute to our businesses for their contributions to Benita Springs' economic well-being. B-Pat, thank you so much for all that you do for us, and do for the city, and do for the entire county. B-Pat's been a fixture there. He really looks after us, so thank you so much.
Amen.
Thank you. We're very proud to have Mayor Nelson on our executive committee of the Horizon Council. The city was one of the first cities to... When it was formed, came right onto the Horizon Council, has been tremendous support. I know Janet served on the council, Martha served on the council, so we've had a good cross-section of people representing. I also have to say that we're very proud to also have the Benita Chamber of Commerce, Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce on the Horizon Council. Christine does a great job with that, and I know you all work very close together, and so you have good representations from the city of Benita Springs and the Benita Springs Chamber on the council. So thank you very much. And by the way, on September 20th, I can't help myself. If anybody wants to go to that luncheon, it's 1,100 of our closest friends. If you want to give me your card as I walk out, I'll be happy to send you an invitation. But it's a great event. It's our 22nd annual event that really recognizes businesses for doing good and doing well. Thank you.
Well done.
Picture with the mayor.
Let me, let me.
I know. This is... This next presentation is indeed a pleasure. We've got this very special employee... Our employees are special. All of them work very hard, but this one young lady in particular has done such a great job that she has been recognized by Gulf Shore Business Magazine as one of the 40 professionals younger than 40 who've distinguished themselves in their professional careers. We are so proud to recognize Arlene Hunter. Please come forward. Just a little bit more about Arlene here. I mean, I think everybody in here knows Arlene, knows all the great work that she does, and she does everything with... Leads with her heart, and we really appreciate that. And you started with special events, and you went on, and we've all recognized your talents and everything like that when it comes to community development. And now, being this business advocate that you are now, it is something that I actually bragged to the governor about this weekend. I got invited to have dinner with the governor at a banquet at the governor mansion, governor's mansion, and this is the young lady that I talked about there. And it was because of the system that we've set up, and it works because of Arlene. When people have a problem, when they run into that bureaucracy that is inherent in any governmental entity, any business, you need an advocate there. You need somebody who will represent the customer. That system is one that works so well, and it works well because of you, Arlene, because you're willing to spend the time, you're fair with them, and you have a way of letting them know, even if there's something that we can't help them, that we're going to help them get to where... As far along the process as we can. So thank you so much, on my behalf especially, because it means a lot to me, being a businessperson, and to know that there's somebody there that can help people get through that morass that can be the bureaucracy. I mean, so everyone, please give her a hand. These are for you. Thank you so much. Would you like to say something? Yes, you would.
I just want to thank everybody for their support, and this is a great honor for me, but it's also a great honor for our city because I wouldn't be able to do the work I do without all of my fellow employees who I love very much. And the city council.
Just throw us in there.
Everybody crowd up here. Let's get a group picture.
Crowd in. All right. Come on, Joanne.
You're not allowed to say.
Move down, move down, move down. Get that wide angle. Not too wide, honey. Very nice. Very nice. Very nice. Thank you, Arlene. Congratulations. Can happen to a nice person.
Okay, at this time, we are going to receive our 2013 report from our Economic Development Council. Christine, how are you today?
I'm well. I am not. Rich Mancini. Rich had a family health emergency. Everything's fine, but he needed to not be here this evening, so I'm pinch-hitting for him. Christine Ross, the Executive Director of the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council. And Carl, what you're supposed to say is, "I promoted her," about Arlene. That's what I say when my staff gets accolades. Oh, thank you. So I couldn't agree with you more. Arlene's been absolutely a joy for us to work with, and there is not a moment when she does not pick up that phone and handle the customer calls that we exchange, and she's really made my job enjoyable as well. So, to begin with PowerPoint, you all have seen it, and you also received a newsletter. And it's the mission, "To build a place to live and work that's economically diverse with a year-round economy that's diverse." You know, that's been our mantra for the last four years, and I finally feel like we're starting to really have this happen. And the mission is to foster a regional collaboration. I think all of us really make sure that we use those words all the time when we're talking with people. And then, for this strong partnership is really a model amongst other organizations in the state. We wanted to start with the By the Numbers Report. The total numbers for this year where we've had impact is, I think, fairly impressive for the little engine that could, the BSE-EDC. We've had 68 leads developed. We have five confidentiality agreements in place, total of 284 jobs created, and the breakdown is there for you, and I apologize about its LW marketing, breakdown of jobs. And when I gave you the numbers just a few weeks ago for the August, we went ahead and calculated the percentage. It's a 27% change in vacant commercial space. So that puts a little bit better perspective for you, how it's being soaked up, and I think that's really a great number to look at. The four-year economic impact, which I'll go into detail later on, is over $3,656,000 for Project B. And then, the initial impact of a smaller but equally important relocation from Joliet, Illinois was an initial investment of $150,000, and it's going to be fun to watch his business blossom. He's right here on Old 41 over near the tax collector's office. And then, the first incentive, the city council, very wisely, with the help of Arlene and Carl, put together a wonderful incentive package that people really... It's the icing on the cake when people are already thinking of coming here for us to be able to do that, and that'll be the first one. When it happens, we'll be eligible for $35,000. Some of the other work that we did on the broad scope with the Hertz relocation, we've basically been attending every meeting, watching to see what can be done if they need any help. We did do some site selection work and help them look at locations with Carl to provide to the Lee EDO. It didn't work out. What we found in Benita wasn't exactly what they wanted, but as it works out, they were very happy to include us in some of the design review. We went and supported them at the hearing examiners for the rezoning of the DRI, and have really tried to reach out and participate. We're even able to connect the head of the building project with Fred Parton at BSU, so now they know each other. There's a name and a face, and if there are challenges with that project, they can communicate with one another directly. We have helped stack the resource rooms in both New Jersey and Oklahoma, which has been really important. The folks at Hertz picked out a selection of materials, and I want to tell you that my staff has great biceps going on. They've huffed a lot of hefty boxes up to three different occasions now to make sure that resource room stays stocked with some really beautiful collateral, including Southwest Spotlight, our Chamber Guide, some of the things from the city, hospital materials, education materials, and the like. Arlene and I were able to attend the Redevelopment Association Conference, Small Town Redevelopment, and as you know, these are the highlights from the year. We participated in the panel discussion as the only example of a well-working, well-run public-private collaboration that involved the city, a chamber, and the business community. We also have, post the groundbreaking and opening of the growing room, have done a ribbon cutting, helped them with initial press work, and helped them to be able to post jobs on our job bank. We're finding that my communications and marketing staff at the chamber, the way we're able to wrap the services around anything the EDC needs... Just want to point out Chelsea Burzak is in the audience. She is the person behind that good work, and we're getting a lot of press coverage. Later on, I'll point out some testimonials to you, and I hope that you'll go to the EDC website and read them thoroughly because we're collecting some really great comments from people who've had a really spectacular experience going through the process here. In addition to that, we helped the terraces with a little permitting issue that they were having, and also worked hand-in-hand with Southwest Florida Workforce Board to host initial job fair at the chamber on multiple days where people could come get initial information and be sorted by Southwest Florida Works, and then they went on to have a very large job fair at Alaco. We checked in with the terraces just this week. They have 92 employees on staff at this point of the 200 they're going to hire. The next wave is happening within the next 30 to 60 days, and we are helping them source some younger workers from some of the training institutions where they're doing culinary certification, air conditioning certification, those kinds of things, so that more of our workforce, the younger folks, can get access to these full-time jobs that have benefits. In addition to that, we went... We weaseled our way, I like to say, into the prison conference at the Hyatt. There was a conference going on where people work from all over the United States, and they work in the storage industry, places like Iron Mountain. And we did a nice trade for them. Chelsea and I went and represented the Benita Springs Astero Economic Development Council for the three-day conference, and in exchange, we went ahead and got some discounts from the local business community via the Chamber of Commerce Avenue so that they would possibly leave the conference facilities and get out into the community and spread their participation out there. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a little handicapped. Yes, please. I'm sorry. They don't let me out and drive at the same time. Chelsea, if you want... There you go. Project B. So I wanted to give you the initial breakdown of Project B in the room. The total is 3,656. These figures, again, are all calculated for me by the expertise of the Lee County Economic Development Office, and they are the same RIMS calculator that I mentioned before. The really awesome part of this calculation that people don't pay attention to very much, but the Lee County Economic Development Office does, is how much of the product is going to be made and sold right in this community. Well, the great news is with this company, the initial, the first product that they're working on, 95% of the product is going to be sold everywhere else but here, which means this is all new money that's going to be coming into the community, and that's an even bigger impact that it would have as if everything were being made here and consumed here. They're starting with 10 jobs. We expect to see them in town next month, and that over three years, they're going to have 37 jobs. And we actually are already getting people contacting us who want to be able to send their resume to them. So if you look at the calculations, and you can see what it comes out to, I think that's pretty neat. And then, I put this detailed testimonial in here for you. Please take your time and read it later on. It's obviously far too much information for a PowerPoint slide, but between what the city did and what we were able to do, windshield tours with their employees that were coming to town, assisting their spouses, getting resumes put to employment agencies, trying to educate them on the types of industries that are here so that as couples, they could make a strong and comfortable move to Southwest Florida. We've really been able to have a high touch with this. We've learned a lot, what to do and not to do as well, but I think that if you have time afterwards, you'll find that that's a really nice testimonial. A breakdown on the total commercial space, this is for you to look at how that 27% looks. It's the same data that you did get a few weeks ago in the August newsletter, and that includes Benita and Astero. And the next one is about use permit activity, which I think, you know, I'm really happy to say that Jackie and John and Greg over in Community Development are always so helpful keeping track of. These are the nuts and bolts that I don't necessarily get to see because we're on the sales side, and when Arlene takes them on and the folks at Community Development, as you can see, we have a really nice steady stream of new businesses, expanding existing businesses, and relocating within the city limits. And I think that what's interesting is the relocating within the city limits is really tremendous because maybe they're upgrading to better space, or they're expanding into larger space, but they're staying in Benita Springs, and so I think that's really a hallmark because of the publicity that you're garnering from the good work that you're doing. The next slide is an exciting slide for me as well. I can remember being here in 2010, and we spoke to the city council about... Talking about waiving impact fees, and you know, it was... We were going to stick our toe in an unknown puddle, and it was a little bit nerve-wracking. We weren't sure what's going to happen, and I think this $370-plus-thousand-saving of impact fees, you can feel pretty certain that every single dollar has gone into hiring trades and outfitting offices with new equipment. And one of the things that I also think is really exciting is we were hoping that medical would congregate here in Benita, and it's happening, and I'm finding more medical offices coming to me and asking me to do searches for the space, and because they're understanding that they can get Class A space now, not pay impact fees, consolidate into one office, and service both Naples and Fort Myers patients from Benita Springs. So it's happening, and I commend you all again for taking that step with us because none of us... We could speculate, but none of us knew exactly. The operational assistance that we've provided, these are some of the smaller activities that happen more frequently, and oftentimes, I'm calling Arlene to get her assistance with these. Alaco Family Golf, they just are... They have broken ground up on Alaco Road. It's a little bit past the edge of this, but they're going to hire a lot of folks to work at this golf and recreation center, and it's going to become a really wonderful amenity for our families, and I think you'll see local folks getting put to work there. The Big Block Sub Shop, the Coconut Point Mall, Cupcakes in Paradise, DeRosa's Grocery, all of these folks that you see up there have been part of the sort of boots-on-the-ground work that we do, and some are little projects and some are bigger projects. The most gratifying one, I think, was Hungry Hand Doggs. He was so, so relieved when you all grew... And he was... It's, you know, that was his life that was invested in that, and just to see the relief on his face, again, you all are doing a great job of making round pegs fit into the hole. Our economic development work legislatively has been fairly diverse. We had a wonderful trip up for the first time, the city, the chamber, and the Economic Development Council to Tallahassee during legislative session. You all passed the first incentive, which is a great boon for the Economic Development Council. We actively supported the tax rebate. We did multiple calls to action regarding Lee Memorial Hospital and asking for letters of support for the Benita Springs Hospital. And I don't know if any of you ever heard, but they got more letters of support from this community than in the history of anyone ever asking for a hospital in their community. So it really worked, and people are paying attention to our government affairs' calls to action. We're working with CRE right now to try to help them get some attention for all of the space that they have open over there, and we're working with the city as they make progress on getting a traffic light looked at for that intersection for economic development and safety reasons. And we continue to be involved with and staying on top of what's going on with the slots for the Fort Myers Greyhound track and for the city's project with them. You can see the last slide... The last point on that slide gives you an idea of the type of topics that we addressed with all of our legislators when we were up there. So one of the other things that we do frequently to make sure people are aware of what we're doing is we go out and we talk to community groups, and Carl's always a great partner when we do those. He's... Always has better slides than I do, though. Chelsea, you're going to have to work on that. We are able to go out as a team and talk about how the sales and the nuts and bolts happen. I forget, Carl calls it... I'm on... In the top of the car, and they're underneath the hood or something. So anyway, we've gone out, and you can see, we've gone to Rotary Clubs, we go into recently gated communities to bear whoever wants to hear from us, and we're giving yearly updates now, and they really like that. The next part of it is a little bit of detail on the marketing and public relations work that we do. We've gone so far as to go over and sit down with a business owner, and my staff from on the chamber side will interview them, draft a press release, take photography, and pitch a story, or just submit it to the media, depending upon the level of interest. DeRosa's, for instance, was one that we actively pitched to a couple of publications and got some really nice coverage for Benita Springs and for the promenade. We're in the news, sharing... We're in the news, sharing e-newsletters. We're using social media a lot more, and we're spending a lot of time posting in our press room. That's helping our search engine optimization on the EDC website, keeping fresh material always going on there. And then we continue to be engaged in local and national conferences, not only fine-tuning my skill sets, specifically in economic development, retention and expansion, and financing programs for small businesses, so I can be more of a resource for our folks that are here. And then as well to learn best practices. The next one is a little bit more about the clients we've served with the public relations work. And goes all the way down to US Metro's press conference is scheduled for later this month. They have quite a big announcement, another fine local Benita Springs company. So if we go to the next slide, the total economic impact to date, this is for 2011 and 2012, and this is in relationship to the $125,000 that the city to date, less 200, I think I left that as Carl's tip of the matching money, 250. You're welcome. Don't spend it all in one place. The economic impact totals over $6,359,000. And if that doesn't just give you goosebumps, it sure does me. And if you'll go to the next slide, please, Chelsea. The way that that works out, if you take that number and you divide it by the $125,000 that the city has put in over the course of the first two years of this investment, it's a 51-to-1 return on your investment. So I'm hoping that as a taxpayer here, and as the keeper and guide of the taxpayers' dollars, you feel like this experiment has been worthwhile so far. I know that our board feels like it has been worthwhile. The next slide, I won't read these to you, but these are recent testimonials. Again, they're very, very interesting, and I think that you should read them because you're going to feel even more proud of what your organization is doing to move this ball up the field. And again, Arlene's leadership and Carl's leadership has just been tremendous. So going forward, goals for 2013. One of the next steps now is to start to execute a marketing plan, and that's something that we've budgeted for in the coming year. We are researching where that's going to be. I expect a lot of it to be electronic. When we can take advantage of a conference that's coming to our beautiful, one of our local establishments, we may, in fact, try to piggyback on that because it's a pretty snappy way to get in front of a group that you normally wouldn't be able to get in front of, and they're already here in your beautiful community. So they were kind of giggling at us a little bit, but they thought it was really brilliant that we were saying, well, you're here, why don't you think about coming back and bringing your business here? So that worked out really nicely, and I think we'll try it again. And you can see that we're going to continue with the existing business services. It's very, very important for us to provide that advocacy. And it's very calming for the local businesses to know that they can get a meeting with the city, community development staff. No one can really even believe how fast it happens. So again, their partnership has been wonderful. So before I conclude, I have wanted to ask if next year, we could come, send you our quarterly newsletter, and maybe come a little less frequently with these formal presentations, if that's comfortable for you. If it's not, we'll keep doing exactly what you want. And then we would like to ask you formally if you would renew your investment in the coming year in this project for us. Lastly, I want to thank our resource partners. None of this would happen without a lot of folks stepping up and collaborating. And again, Benita Springs is known for collaboration, and is, the success of this program of work is directly related to all of the folks working with us. And then lastly, the investors, I just want you to take a look at how the selection of folks is growing. And some of us are signed on for three-year investments. They believe in this community so much, which is really telling. And then I'll just stand back and answer any questions you may have, and I thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you very much. And Counsel, do you have any questions for Christine? Yeah, Steve?
Thank you. We know the EDC is doing a great job for us. One of the things we were, we had some criticism on was the reduction of impact fees, elimination of impact fees. Could you go back to that slide? I was a little confused as to what it was showing.
So you got, I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. You were criticized for...
Well, there was, there's questions about whether or not we should, but explain to me what these charts show.
So this chart shows you, the waiver of impact fees is only on existing buildings. The idea was that with 1.4 million square feet of empty commercial space, we needed to do something to soak that space up so that then we could get back into a mode where folks would be building again. If it's empty commercial, it's not contributing to the tax base. So we, as a group, talked about eliminating impact fees for a specific period of time, and it's through August of 2014, only on existing buildings. And so what you see here are nine applicants that took advantage of the waiver of impact fees. And some of them were formerly office use, and they have turned to medical use now. The impact fees on medical are the highest of all the impact fees. Because that medical office didn't have to pay the impact fees, might have been an incentive to have them move to Benita Springs. The total amount of money that that client saved is $27,771. So that space wasn't full anyway. It wasn't contributing to the tax base. And what you see now is they probably spent $27,000 outfitting and constructing the space to their specifications, maybe buying some new equipment and moving in. So now that's a contributing business to the tax base.
That's fine.
That gives you an idea? Okay.
Good. Thank you very much. Anybody else have a question? Yeah, Steve?
Not a question. A couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to say that I know that Rick Price is extremely happy with the zoning that you helped him with with Hungry Hound Dogs. And he's a 30-year veteran of the United States Air Force, and he's now giving back to the city by serving on the Veterans Advisory Council. So the second thing I'd like to say, you mentioned expansion. I have seen a company in my district, LW Marketing, go from a small rental place by Meadowlark and has now moved off of Katrina Ave and bought a building and now has hired some additional employees from our community. So I want to thank Quinn and Haika for all they've done for our community.
I do as well. I agree with you 100%. They're a great addition.
All right, thank you. Anyone else this time? Yes, Marla?
Well, being ever the skeptic, I see a two, couple of things. One is a 27% change in the amount of square foot that's being utilized, or vacant, I'm sorry. Vacant square foot, 1.4 million square feet in 2010, and it's down to 1.02 square feet in 2013. And I thought we, like, the first year, there was 450,000 that went out and got rented. So it doesn't look like there's 27% change, but that's happened over three years, or it's, it's just kind of holding steady. It's not really moving forward. And the other thing I'm looking at is Love My Shower Door and the company, My Shower Door, this is an expansion of 22 jobs? That's great. That's in North Naples, right? Are they moving into Benita?
No, they're on Alaco as well. But their employees, their families, they all live here, work here.
Yeah, I know their place in North Naples. The other thing is the terraces of Benita, the terraces, beautiful. If anybody wants, I don't want to do a commercial, but I took a tour. What a fantastic asset for our community. And I know that it will attract a lot more of the medical for us. But I wouldn't say, I'm glad we're helping them with a job fair, but they came to us before we formed the EDC, I believe, when we did the industrial authority bonds out of Olatchua County. So I don't know that's 200 jobs that you can claim was created by the EDC.
Well, I don't think that they were created by the EDC. What I'm telling you is that we have helped these companies that have created these jobs. I wouldn't say that I created them. I was on their community advisory board when they were just the very first wisp of a thought and spent two years on that advisory board with them. But what I'm telling you is that as they continue to be a part of growing into this community, we're servicing them at various aspects along their train. I didn't, I didn't tell them to come here, and it wasn't because of me that they came here, no question about it. But we are helping them with their jobs, and we're helping them get to the point where there will be 200 jobs.
Well, I think all those are important services. And I think, you know, how we're working with permitting and, you know, people coming to you and you helping them get to Arlene and working in tandem and the job fairs. I think that's really important. Could that be done without having, through the Chamber, the Chamber doing that, and then the city, Arlene doing what she does at the city? And perchance, you should meet once a month or something? I mean, do we have to spend $100,000 to do that?
Well, let me ask you that question.
That's just, you know, a question that I get from people is, well, I thought that's a Chamber function. Thank you, Mayor.
Having worked in the inside and the outside of this particular issue, I have to tell you, Counsel, you have created something remarkable here. And I, and I know that there's not a great deal of appreciation for it sometimes. But having, went into Christine's office numerous times and saw her sitting down there with people who are moving their business from Naples, and she's able to pull up now information from CoStar, and she's able to talk to them. When I walk into that, she calls me up, can you get over here right now? And because I want you to kind of just stroll in like the mayor's popping in. I mean, to be able to do that kind of thing, I mean, yeah, could she do it just kind of out of goodness of her heart? Sure she could. But you know what? We formed this partnership between companies like my own, Nelson Marine Construction, between the city and between the Chamber, so that we could get these companies here, so we could do a better job of assisting them. Everybody who, every one of the people who are a member of this thing, we go to these meetings, and we sit there, and we talk about, and we help Christine plan what to do around this. It's that partnership. It's that seed money, that little bit of seed money, which allows other businesses like my own to have the confidence to say, well, if the city's investing, I'm investing. It's the same way the Horizon Council works. If it wasn't for the Lee County coming up with some money to do something with, our Horizon Council wouldn't raise any money. And the Horizon Council wouldn't be able to do the good work that they would. And plus, we need a focal point. We need a focal point for people to go to. Arlene has been invaluable. Carl's been invaluable in this effort. But there has got to be an entity that can go ahead and work, you know, in confidence there in the way they do. I think it works amazing. And it's an amazing thing to watch, something I'm really proud of. So that's it for me. Bill?
Yeah, I'm going to say something.
Yeah, look.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
I do believe that, going back to the original purpose of this way back when, when we did it, initiated, as you recall, I suggested that it be Benita Springs by itself, because we were putting up the $100,000. Today, Astero has put their ECC, they put $1,000 up. I just wondered if there's any consideration, even with all the things that are going on between the two places, of them perhaps participating financially in the same way that we have because we represent taxpayers, including all of us here. And we wonder, I wonder about that. I happen to think that the improvement, the smart move was when, with the medical facility, which Steve commented about, was a very good financial decision to make because the medical business in the health area is going to be, is dramatically getting bigger all over. And we have a great opportunity with all the space that we have. So I guess the question is, are we going to get participation from Astero in any other way, even though they don't have any elected body?
Well, and I think what you just said at the very end, Bill, is the point. They aren't an elected body. They don't have a budget that they manage. I guess if we wanted, we'd have to go to Lee County and say, on behalf of Astero, would you kick in $25,000? So on the other side, what I would say to you is there are many Astero businesses from Fine Mark Bank, Coconut Point Mall, Hyatt Regency, Ted Todd Insurance, that all participate and pay money as well. And so what you really need to understand is there is a team collaboration across these lines that's happening that is more special than anything else, especially given some of the other stuff that's going on. So rather than focus on the ECCL, which is not a body that manages a municipal tax-based budget, I think you need to be really gratified about the bigger picture of these two communities coming together to diversify our economic base.
Okay, if I could add something there, Bill. And I mean, it's a good question because, I mean, I mean, from, if we act at a real, I think, parochial and a level to where each community has their own interest right there. That's something that the Horizon Council is working on right now. Mimi Chan just contacted Christine and myself about, you know, having a more of a role in, in that larger regional effort. There's this effort to put together the Horizon Council with Collier County's efforts and, and make this one big seamless thing. Because we realize that, I love, I love this new term of collateral benefit, that there's a, if Hertz gets built, you know, 10 miles up the road, or five miles up the road, two miles, there's a collateral benefit to 800 employees coming to this area. There's a collateral benefit when there's a 200-person, you know, what do they call it? The phone place. Sorry, the phone place, great.
Yeah, that place.
Call center.
What a genius I am, huh? Anyway, so the answering center there for Hertz. I mean, these are the things that are really important. And I think that when it comes to Benita and Astero, I think that that's just, that's just a small part of that, is that so many people that I know and do business with, they live in Astero, and their business is in Benita. So many people that I know have businesses in Benita, and they live in Astero. I mean, it's, and the same with North Naples. I mean, we're a metropolitan area, and I think that there's benefit there. And, you know, to be able to put their name with this, I think it's, it's well worth it. It's just, and it's, it's a great thing to watch. And I got to tell you, I'm with you, sometimes it can be a little, it can test your patience sometimes, sometimes, part of the stuff, it can test mine all the time, with some of the things that go on. But I got to tell you, this is something that we need, I plan on, as a business person, I plan on investing in this, just as long as the city does. I think that every one of these people on this list plan on doing the same thing. And so anyway, that's, that's it. But thank you for your questions there. Anyone else? Yes, Marla?
Yeah, I'd like to set the floor back. My question more was, Ben, that do you need to have that additional layer? Is it not something that could be, for instance, you have the Government Affairs Group at the Chamber. And is it possible to just break it down? So maybe if we're spending, I do have a, I do have an understanding of regional, and I have argued for why regionally it's important to invest because, you know, somebody who has a job in North Naples or Astero brings that money home into their pocket in Benita and can pay their mortgage or whatever here. At the same time, I would like to have some more tax base here in Benita, being productive and not on Alaco. And that's, you know, that's a hope of mine, and all of ours, I'm sure. I'm just wondering if there's a way to make it simpler, so some of those investments that we're making, those incentives can get out to bring more people here to Benita. The $100,000, I know we've looked at how it's been broken down. That was my question. So it looks to me that if we don't take into account the 200 jobs in the terraces, that 84 jobs have been created. That could be a multiplier of how, how much those jobs, you know, how much value they bring to, I see two, maybe three businesses that have come to Benita. I want more businesses in Benita for the money that our taxpayers are paying out. That's what I'm saying. Okay.
So may I respond to that?
Yes, please.
Chelsea, can you go back to the total slide of the 600 and some odd? I want you to understand that the, the number of jobs that I have up there has no effect on the calculation of the $51 to every $1 you've spent. We only took into account the next one that shows the whole grouping, the 6.1, yeah, the 6 million. There you go.
Oop.
Oh, wow. There you go. So, this is the slide, and these are the four projects that we use to calculate that $51. Those other jobs that we're touching and we're having some, some effect on, that doesn't have anything to do with the $51. So those are the projects. And Project Two is actually LW. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see that that 6 million, taking away the 125 over two years that the city has put in, comes to that $51, $1 per dollar that you spent. So that's why I said to you, when you look at those total jobs numbers, some of it, they're still coming in. The terraces is at 92. They're going to do another big wave of hiring. We're helping with that, but we didn't do all of that. So when I do the multiplier, again, I just want you to understand, we're only talking about those four projects for that number. Everything else is residual and just adds more value to it. Everything else is residual and just adds more value to it. But I wanted it to be a concrete number, not just some fluff-in-the-air number for you. So those four projects, you can reach out and touch today and know that in October, Project B will have landed. Is that a better?
Thank you.
Does that make it more clear?
That tells exactly what you guys have impacted that way.
Great.
The other stuff is important, very important.
Right.
Because I think it helps the whole community of business, the whole community. Because I know, and that's another, you know, a weight in my mind about just the Chamber doing this work because you represent your members, whereas you're here to work with all those businesses that come to the EDC.
And we do. We work with anyone and everyone.
Yeah, and just one more thing before we go ahead and wrap this up here. And thank you for coming by. It was a great, great, great slide. Didn't like the font, though.
It was a much prettier font before we sent it via email. Oh, my gosh, you have no idea she's gonna be stabbing herself.
Boom, her head just exploded right on the spot. I was just kidding.
I liked the font.
It was a beautiful font. Something happened in translation.
Anyway, thank you very much for that. And I have to tell you, Christine has been keeping us all hopping, especially me. I mean, it's amazing, the, every, probably twice a week, can you meet for lunch down there? There's this person who wants to start a web company, have a web company that's in town or whatever. And it's just one thing after another. Benita is just buzzing with these companies that are right on the cusp. And they need somebody to hold their hand and run them through this. And not one person, not one entity can do it. It's gonna take all of us, okay? That's why this is important. So thank you very much.
May I say?
You need another question?
It's not a question. I was kinda hard on the EDC when they first came in, but then probably the last person that you would expect to say something nice about the ECCL. But I will tell you, I've said all along that we're so much more powerful together than apart. And if it's the EDC that holds us together, then it's money well spent. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
And thank you. And Carl, we're gonna have this broader discussion as whether or not we're going to fund them again during the budget cycle. Would that be the proper time to talk about that?
Yes, it's in the budget, in the proposed budget, yes, sir.
Okay, we can have that discussion then. Good. Oh, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, you had, Christine, you had, I'm sorry, you had touched base on not coming quarterly. I guess I would just say, I like the quarterly updates. But I just.
No problem. We got pushed back.
Head nod or a non-head nod, yeah, okay.
It's a good thing, yeah. Okay, not a problem at all. We got pushed back and it started to be, like, we had one in August and another one now. We'll try to make sure we stay on point so you don't get tired to see us two months in a row. That's fine.
Right.
Good deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I think that's all the reports and presentations we have. Consent agenda, we've got A through F, Council.
Pull A, please.
Pull A. We have A. Is there anything else before we pass the remainder?
I'll make the motion to approve the.
I would second that.
Motion is second to approve the remainder, B through F. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slecta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkurt?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, Councilman McIntosh, item A.
Item A, I'm uncomfortable in time we put a million-dollar piece of work on the consent agenda, especially since we really haven't had a chance to discuss it as a full council. I didn't learn about what the elements were until yesterday or right after that. So I think we have, with this amount of money and this kind of contract, we need to have a little bit of time to talk about that among ourselves. And that's what I ask, Mr. Mayor.
Good, good. I think that's fair. Thank you.
So I'll ask, if you don't mind, may I ask the city manager to sort of describe where we are and how we got to this point and what the contract means?
Mm-hmm.
And before that, I'll give a little pre-Carl history here to this point. This is something, as Martha knows and I know, some of us have been here, the more well-seasoned council people, is that okay to say?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I won't take offense.
Good, good. But that particular piece of property was thought to be integral to the expansion of that community hall block and the downtown redevelopment area and that type of thing there. For the longest time, Gary Price, our general manager, he's been under negotiations with them on and off, probably since our inception there. That was one of the pieces that we saw as being, some of us have seen as being probably the more, we'll say, municipal kind of a function there and being part of that whole block. And so when Carl came along, he kind of picked up the ball there and led us to this point here. So I just thought I'd preface that.
Well, I think what really started the ball rolling again was, we had taken a look in the files at some of the numbers that had been bantered back and forth between the city and the church over the number of years that Gary Price had been working on it. And they were significantly higher than this number. I mean, we are talking in the three million-plus range. And the city, rightly so, never felt that it was worth that amount of money and could wait. As we entered into the discussions about what to do about the redevelopment area along the downtown area, the old forty-one area, what role could this piece of property play if the city could purchase it? When we were looking at the engineering, the centralized stormwater system, the engineers were concerned that we were not going to have enough property to make that happen. So as we entered into negotiations for the church, there was an expectation that we might well use that for a portion of the centralized stormwater system. As we have evolved that thinking, we may or may not need that for stormwater as we continue our discussions with South Florida Water Management District and our Public Works Department. But that does not diminish the fact that this property is adjacent directly to the east, across a road, felts, that connects to our community hall property, where the banyan tree is. And so whether we use that for stormwater eventually, or we provide the city council an opportunity to workshop how we want that entire area to connect, we think this is a great investment over time. And we were thrilled, we actually went out and had an appraisal done, a timely appraisal for this property, and it came in at nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And after our negotiations, we were able to settle in at a million dollars on the purchase price, only fifty thousand dollars higher than the appraised property value of it. And this was, again, a church, it was a delicate situation, but we were able to do it in a way that I think the church is happy, that we can be happy and will have access to the property for decades to come, depending on how the council would like to finally use that property. And that's kind of how we got here.
Could you explain the rent-back kind of a situation?
Yes.
It's just, just in brief, if it was mentioned.
Right. First, what's in front of you today is simply the purchase, okay? We have talked initially about a rental agreement with the church, but again, that would be pending your final approval, once we bring that up and get that worked up. But we thought that, first off, that they should manage the property if they can, as if they continue to own it. And so part of that agreement is, they will pay all the electricity, they're gonna pay all their water, all their utilities, they're gonna mow the grass, just like they always have, and they're gonna maintain the property that way. We didn't think it appropriate, obviously, council can change this, but we didn't think it was appropriate to be charging the church a lot of rent, given the fact that we've gotten a number that we feel comfortable with and have not been required as a part of this deal to find another location for that church group to move to or to build them another facility. And sometimes that's part of deals that, again, we're not involved in. So we were thinking they would do all the regular maintenance on the property, handle all the utilities, all the minor repairs to the building that are required, that we would charge them a hundred dollars a month in rent, and that we would assist them should they get into major infrastructure issues like their air conditioning goes out or their roof goes bad or whatever. However, before we go to closing on this, should the council approve this purchase, we're going to have a complete building inspection done so we understand clearly what our exposure might be with regards to those issues. And so that's kind of what we've done. We do not have that on paper. Those are just initial discussions with the church. I think they've been receptive to those discussions, and so that's kind of where we're at at this point. Oh, and let me tell you why. Because they are looking for another location to go to, they are asking for a year to stay in the current location. And that gives us plenty of time to figure out exactly how we're going to use that property and allow the church to move to another location of their choice.
Okay. And Council, just to let you know that there have been all kinds of talk on what may or may not happen with that, but I can tell you in the past that there has been some talk about, you know, being a multi-use facility. One, you know, your property pressure's in one place, your building apartment's in another place.
Your library.
Yeah, your library's in another place. And so I think there's opportunity here. If council chooses to go through with this, I think one of the things that we will need to have is a set of charrettes and workshops and look, take a look at the plans that were made in the past and find out what the community wants to do there and what the community needs are. Because I think there's a really good opportunity to do a partnership with the county and with all the other agencies in order to get this to really come around. And it will actually create this hub in the downtown that we've often thought about.
Oh, Mayor.
Yes.
May I? Absolutely. And I remember the discussions that went on with this church, which David Piper's grandmother helped found, a little bit of Benita history, Gladys helped found that church. But yes, exactly, we talked about a sixty thousand square foot building that would include the sheriff's department, the tax collector, the driver's license, all those supervisor of elections, a library and a two thousand square foot community room like we have right there right now. And that we needed to have that space also to have some parking, because that won't do it all. But to have that kind of building downtown would be teeming with activity and be bringing people there that, you know, otherwise do their business in scattered locations around town. And I think would really, you know, I've argued this about the library for a long time. I keep saying the library needs to be downtown. It's between two schools, the elementary and the middle school, so it really would make sense in someday that high school we're gonna have. And I think it's a good investment. It was significantly more, they wanted significantly, a lot more, plus they wanted to land at Mayhood property back, way back when. So this is a pretty good deal. I do want to ask a question about the liability insurance. I don't see that there. And are we paying liability insurance? Because sure should.
During the terms of the lease agreement, the seller will be responsible for all the liability insurance and they will, they will.
It's in the special conditions on page six of six. It's the last one.
Thank you.
They'll provide.
And to clarify, Audrey has documented, Mr. Steinmeier was asking about the utilities being paid. If you look at number, letter I, yeah, the letter H, that the responsible of all utilities during the pendency. So once a lease agreement is in full effect, the church will be responsible for all utilities on the property.
And will, Madam Attorney, will they be also liable, let's say, slip and fall? They will be liable for, because they are liable, they are responsible for maintenance of the property?
Yes, I mean, the risk manager and I haven't had a chance to talk to him yet. He will make a recommend, you know, while we have time to write the lease, he will make a recommendation as to what insurance we need. Now, we will have coverage also in the event because it is city property and they do go for deep pockets. People go for deep pockets.
Yes.
I'm not gonna guarantee that they're not gonna sue us, not the church, but somebody if they had an injury.
Okay.
I can't guarantee you that.
Yes, Bill?
Who was on the negotiation team?
Basically, Arlene and I did the negotiations with the church.
Did you negotiate the hundred dollars also?
Yes, I take responsibility for that. Yes, sir.
Well, actually, that's not part of the deal, though, right? This deal we're talking about?
That's not part of the purchase deal. That's just suggested terms of a lease agreement to come.
It is part of the agreement for purchasing as a special condition. We have special conditions that set forth what the lease is to have, the skeletal lease. So the hundred dollars is.
So it is part of that?
It is part of it. Now, that's the reason we bring this agreement to you first and then have the church sign if there's an issue, you know, if you want. And now, and also, it's only for one year at the hundred. It would be renegotiated should the church desire to hold over.
Can I ask one more, one more question?
If they want to stay longer than one year.
Who, did you offer or did they just give you the hundred? Was there any negotiations in terms of the dollar amount for the rent?
No.
Did they suggest it or we suggest?
We suggested it. And the reason we suggested it is because they were going to handle everything on property, all of their other maintenance, all their utilities, all those kinds of things, we would not be responsible for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Steve?
Carl, I know after Tuesday we talked, and I had a couple of phone calls from constituents, and they said, where did this come from? You know, it's like brand new to their ears. So I understand where Dr. Steve is coming from. The second thing is, they're saying, well, if we did make this investment, what's the return on that investment? And I couldn't answer that question. So is there any reasonable response to that question?
Well, I think the return on the investment is yet to be seen on how we utilize the property. But I will tell you, even if we used it for stormwater drainage, that what you would gain in increased value of properties around there and hopefully investments, it's like we've talked about with regards to the centralized stormwater system, that you're going to, you're gonna drive the value and the development potential of lots around there up because they're not gonna have to use as much of their properties for stormwater as they do now. They'll be able to build better and bigger, and we're looking for that opportunity. However, there are other opportunities for this property, especially as it relates to the banyan tree property. And so we'll have, I think we'll wait, have to wait and see what the return on investment will be.
This, I'm gonna interject something here now that's going on here, is that we're kind of building our own mousetrap here to catch ourselves here. I mean, if we don't do something like this, because what we're doing through our tax increment financing and all the rest of the things we're doing for the downtown area is we're creating, we're creating value, we're creating worth. And as that, that value starts to really start to escalate and escalate and escalate over the, we'll say, the next ten to fifteen years, pretty soon the property values are going sky-high in the area. The city doesn't have the municipal services that it will need fifteen years from now. I mean, when we're a city of, when we will be, and it's a city of eighty thousand, hundred thousand people, there's gonna be a whole list of municipal services we're gonna need and they're gonna have to be put somewhere. So you're either gonna have to rent from somebody or build another building someplace or buy another piece of property. And we're gonna leave another city council with the task of figuring out where that's gonna be and what they're gonna have to pay. This, to me, is just a good, sound planning, municipal planning. And it's something that has been on the, and this is, this is not only just about the downtown area. This is just being able to invest in the infrastructure that it's gonna need to take to run a city the size of the city that this is gonna be if all our economic development plans, if all our industrial development plans come to fruition. So that's the way I look at it. That's the answer to that question. The question is more like, what are you gonna do if you don't do this? So, anyway, yes, Audrey?
I just want to raise two points regarding this agreement. The first point is, this is not a situation where this.
It's gonna cost everybody a dollar.
This is not a situation where the city is acquiring this property through eminent domain, and that's a very important thing to consider because, one, it would be more costly by eminent domain, but secondly, if you acquired property for redevelopment purposes through eminent domain, which is legal, there would be impediments if we decided to dispose of the property, in other words, try to sell the property. There are special requirements that are now in place. So the fact that we're making this as a voluntary sale, free and clear, is a value added to the contract. The second thing I wanted to raise is the fact that while this has a lease-back provision, I want to point out to council that previous councils have voted for acquisition of property, whether it was the bamboo, whether it was the portion of Riverside Park that was the Imperial Motor that allowed life, not life estates, allowed caretaker agreements to allow residents to stay on the property. And there is a value added to the city in having people occupy space rather than having empty space, you know, that people can do some issues with. At this point, as the city manager pointed out, the city does not know what it's planning to do with the property. So one year sounds like a lot of time, but by the time it takes to plan things.
So what you're saying is, it's better to allow there to be activity there than to have a vacant building sitting there for you?
Heck, yeah. Heck, yeah.
I would tend to think from a safety perspective, yes, sir.
Even if it was for free.
Prevention.
Correct. And we have entered into free in the past.
You've got a built-in caretaker for the property.
Correct.
Okay. All right, other questions?
Yes, Peter.
And actually, to that point, that was my question. We have a one-year lease agreement at $100 per month. If it were to extend longer than a year, could we also write in there that it would not be at $100 a month? It would be renegotiated?
Yes, sir, that's already in there.
Sure, absolutely.
That's item E.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Any other, any other comments or questions?
Well, may I just say that we're finding a million dollars for this, but I think we came up with asking for money for buying Wonder Gardens at one time. So, you know, somehow we found money for this, but I know Councilman McIntosh had asked about how we could participate with that, and that wasn't really given a chance. And anyhow, find another million dollars, whatever. Thank you.
Well, I got to tell you, if.
I know, it's not a very popular comment.
If Councilman Piper ever brings his price down like this, he'll be next.
Yeah, there you go, sir.
Anyway, what's your pleasure, counsel?
I'll move to approve.
I would second.
Motion to approve, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Zlakda?
No.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Longart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, let's see, that takes care of consent agenda A through F, and we are to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak this time about any item, please come forward.
A couple of things a little late, but H and I.
Some people are going to forget who you are, you have to tell.
Oh, yeah, Rick Steinmeier. He'll put a name tag on me and flash in lights so I can read it. Yeah, the buyer in this agreement we're just discussing, buyer will pay and be responsible for all utilities during the pendency of the lease. Now, to me, that says that the city's going to pay the electric bill and the water bill on this church. Is that what it says?
Right, should be seller. And as well as seller shall obtain insurance. You're right.
I'm right. Thank goodness.
As well as the number right.
Thank goodness. Gee whiz, and the buyer is also going to pay for the insurance on the premise. That's also, I'm also correct on that one. Hey, you have a two-banger. All right. Now, as far as economic development now, we've given away how many thousands of dollars worth of impact fees to get these jobs, and that wasn't in the calculation as to how many dollars return we get. Could we take in that impact fee and maybe make it half as much as we've given away, and that would cover the bill that we want to give them, the $250,000? But that's not 200, or $100,000 is not all we're giving them to locate in here. And we're going to pay them to come here. All right.
All right, thank you very much, Rick. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, Deb McLean with the Banana Peel. We have a history of difficulty writing contracts for sale and purchase and leases, and I would like to have a separate review of the lease. It needs to be a little tighter. Also, I understand this purchase, I support it 110% if that's possible, because it, it starts to bundle properties and makes it usable, vacating felts, vacating rentals. You have some functionality there, you get your infrastructure, and you get a piece of property that you can build on and build something beautiful and substantial. So I 100% support of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Gallagher from Cedar Creek. I never get this microphone in the right place. My comments are on the administrative code, item on the agenda nine B, subitem on the green sheet, three D. Green sheet is 13090250. And it's about allowing the mayor, whoever he or she may be at the time, to decide that only 10 speakers from a group may address the council, rather than allowing each individual from that group to speak. This may be for time-saving purposes, but I believe it's a bad rule because, one, it goes against the American tradition and expectation that allows everybody to speak. People who belong to and agree with the group may have very different reasons for doing so. It's worthwhile for the council to hear their individual opinions. Number two, it's valuable for the council to hear everyone because it speaks to the interest level and intensity of feeling on an issue. It gives the people a feeling that they're being listened to. Three, it allows the mayor to suppress the opinions of those he or she disagrees with without having to acknowledge publicly that he is in opposition. You'll have to think about that one. In certain circumstances, this could legally be used to give one side an advantage. So please consider not limiting speakers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
My name's Alberto Bajer from Com Lane in Bonita Springs, and I'd like to make some comments with regards to the EDC. Basically, what I'd like to know, what I'd like to know a few, please, is who are the members? What methodology was followed to qualify for eligibility? Is it a closed group, or is there room for additional participation? And who is the spokesman for the city with the public in their regard? Not less important, who does one go to to get such answers? Given that the dynamic in which these meetings are set up, there is no possibility for interaction. Somewhat of a monologue from the guy on the microphone, and then there's the audience in front of the interested party. So I find it remarkably inefficient and, to be frank, almost frustrating. So which question are you able to answer, given the corresponding dynamics, if any? And if not, where do I go to get such answers, given that every time that I approach the city manager, he basically sends me an email acknowledging receipt of my, well, not every time, the two times that he has been cordial enough to reciprocate with my good manners. He basically just sends me an email that reads, please put all of your concerns in writing by email. So in other words, he's putting me to do a lot of homework now? Now, I've done the homework in the past, and despite my having done so, submitting the information in writing, there was no action done on the agenda that I proposed, which was a six-point agenda that Jane Swanson has, as part of her file in my regard, and not one item has been addressed correctly, as merited. I've even brought people from my country that are influential, who happened to have met with the city manager and the manager of code enforcement, and they witnessed the professional, eloquent, and polite approach that was, that was taken, and we were just listened to, we were promised that action would be taken, including, for example, the termination of the code enforcement officer that created the soap operas in our neighborhood that have rendered it unpeaceful or lack, without peace. And the guy still exists, and he's still creating more of this commotion. So what does one do in order to be able to get any of this answered? Is one of my concerns. And then, of course, this is already flashing, so I don't know how much longer I have, but I'm going to follow up with some additional specific bullets that I would like to bring to your all's attention so that I can hopefully get some answers.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, Fred Forbes. Wanted to first of all compliment the, the staff and community development where you apply for building permits. We had the occasion to go over there today, and the, what you call, I would call them customer service agents, they were extremely helpful to the people that were applying for the permit. I would hope that the purchase of the church for the million dollars, which I think is a good idea, does not deter the city from moving forward with what you all agreed to do, which is the streetscaping and landscaping. I think you can space it out over a couple of years, but you don't want to do more than that. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the city attorney's report. Audrey, you're up.
Thank you. For the first item, just to discuss the continuation of the appeal. Last month, you heard from community development staff along with Central Mobile Homes as to Mr. Lopez. This is the gentleman who wants to place a mobile home in the interchange area, which that is prohibited under our existing comprehensive plan as laid out in the green sheet. At this time, we are requesting that you continue this matter until October 2, to allow additional time for the private sector to try to fashion a solution, if possible, before city council renders any final decision.
Is there a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to continue this to October 2nd. Give the staff time to try to negotiate this out. Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Zlakda?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, item B. Explain to us what this mayor's trying to do to us here.
Well, and this mayor's not really trying to do anything. This is a situation, I know. This is, any mayor this could happen to, and what happened is the legislature, well, let me back up a little bit.
Thank you.
There was a case about two or three years ago, I don't know how many of you remember when Barbara Peterson came here, and we talked a little bit about the case. There was a case where there was a workshop being held by a committee, an advisory board, where public kind of stormed the bastille, and they were not permitted to speak because the committee had a rule not allowed. And while the sunshine law always allows the right for the public to observe the meetings, they don't necessarily require the public an opportunity to be heard. So to remedy that, the state adopted a new statute. That statute will go into effect on October 1st. If you go to your packet on the very last two or three pages, you'll see the statute as identified as chap, session law, chapter 2013, 227, and the ordinance number is Florida statute section 286.0114. And you have the memorandum that I provided you on it. There are exceptions to where public would have the right to speak, but basically, the public now has a new opportunity to be heard. In the July memorandum I mentioned, I'm going to need to modify some administrative codes, both this administrative code as well as the one for advisory boards, because we want to make sure that we do adhere to the statute. The reason I did not schedule this as just, let's adopt it as a resolution, public hearings, I wanted the opportunity to talk to you, because part of it is what I consider possibly controversial, and because part of it I wrote based on what I think might be appropriate as opposed to what's in the statute, I wanted to make sure I had direction from you before I heard, hey, what's the attorney thinking here? So if you go to rule 1.17 of the proposed code on page 10, you'll see that public comment in item number three is now identified as A, B, C, D. Currently, it's one paragraph, I thought it'd be easier to read. Under the new, I am referencing the statute, providing the public opportunity to be heard. The language that's not underlined in B and C is existing language that's in there. We still have the four minutes, we still have the mandatory fill-out the speaker form. Now, I don't believe the city has required the speaker forms. I'm sure this, I'm looking at the recording secretary, because I'm sure she would love it, because trying to figure out spelling of names.
I know, she's always after me to do that, and as usual, I don't, I don't comply.
So that's, that's one. And again, this is, most of this is straight out of the statute. The form is supposed to have the individual support, opposition neutrality on a proposition, and if they want to designate a representative. And that's in the statute, that part. The area where it gets controversial, where I thought it could get controversial, is item D, which is to keep the meeting orderly. I have language that if there's a sharing of 10 or more speakers on any given item attending an individual meeting, the mayor at the beginning can determine whether or not he wants to have representatives, he or she, because it might not be you in the future, representative.
Most certainly won't be me in the future.
Well, you'll be, eventually, per our charter, term limited, and it will be somebody else, and whoever the mayor may be can go by representatives instead of having the entire group. It has not happened that often, but it has happened once or twice where we were not able to continue with, you know, certain type of business until we either had the room cleared, and that would be city council, or local planning agency where we had to just postpone after we had, you know, a controversial subject. The 10 is the number I put in, that is a number that I thought could be considered reasonable. City council, I would not suggest making it lower than that. You know, like if there's a representative of three, it seems like you could listen to all three. But, you know, if you want to put in 20, 30, 500, that's fine, whatever council feels is appropriate. The other thing that is, again, out of my, my idea as opposed to what's in the statute, is other than the requirement of 10 minutes, or at least 10 speakers, in other words, the mayor cannot limit it if it's less than 10, the decision to limit representative is discretionary on the part of the mayor, meaning the mayor's running the meeting, the mayor should run the meeting, and let the mayor decide whether or not to limit. If the mayor wants to have everybody speak and thinks that is the more appropriate measure, that may be the appropriate measure. Now, I know in the past, the mayor has asked people to not have redundancy, people repeating the same thing if you agree with a speaker, or, you know, if you just want to kind of give a show, you know, to have the meeting go more expediently, has been able to do that. Now, this is a new statute, the statute does require things to be actually placed in our policy. We're lucky we do have a policy, so there was something to place.
Let me ask you that, just in short. What are we required to place in there that isn't in there now, required?
I would say the only thing is, if you desire to have a representative-type requirement, you need to have something in there. I would, that's if you want to have a representative. If you don't want to have a representative, you don't have to have it in there.
Required, that's required, yeah.
The form, I would suggest that you have, you already had the language for the form. It tells you how the form is supposed, is prescribed. This just gives additional prescription to that form.
The form to sign out, okay? So we need, we know we need that, okay?
So if you don't want to have representative at all, that is perfectly fine, too. And then I do have the requirement that they're supposed to give it to the recording secretary at the beginning of the meeting, so she can get, she likes that, I can see that face there. But again, I put, but no later than commencing speaking. In other words, not to fill it in a half hour, an hour later for her to figure out which, which form goes with which person.
Counsel, if you would allow me, Audrey, why don't we do it this way? Why don't you go ahead and prepare, prepare one that has exactly, that adds exactly to our ordinance what we need to have in there that's missing now? And then, then you can have some options, not written into the ordinance, you can have some other things that we could do, and counsel can talk about that. The counsel may have some other things they want to do. They may want to have five minutes, or three, or six, six periods, or whatever it is like that. We can, we can do, basically, we can inflict upon ourselves whatever we want to, actually. But I, but I think that at this point in time, counsel, unless I'm wrong, why don't we just put, put into the ordinance, propose to put in the ordinance what we're required to by law, over and above what we already do?
And, and that, I would say, the only thing is, again, and that's where I needed your direction, I would put in C definitely, and I, you do not have to have D in there if you decide you do not want to do that, but just don't try, if you decide that you want to have representatives speak, I will tell you no at a meeting, because you do not have that under the statute. And then if anything else you want to change, I'll be happy to make those changes.
Okay. Okay. Good, good.
And I need this by October 1, so I will have it scheduled September 18, so I'd like direction tonight.
Counsel, what's your, yes, Pete?
I just have the one comment on the 10 speakers. I just would like to entirely remove that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
That's fine, as long as you recognize the mayor will not have the authority.
Well, I mean, so far, I mean, what we've done is we've, we've asked a representative, we've asked them, because when you have, if you have 100 people in here, they've got to be pretty lit up, which they can be every once in a while, to want to sit through 100 speakers themselves. And a lot of times, they're really appreciative of people's efforts to go ahead and not just say the same thing over and over and over again. So, I mean, it really, from sitting in the center chair here, there are some ways that we can do that, and there'll always be somebody different sitting here, but basically, I think all of us want everybody to be able to, to have their ability to say that. Now, in the future, in the future, if other city councils want to change that, they can change it, right?
Absolutely. And, and let me understand then, the direction would be not to have that language in here, you know, we can encourage but not mandate.
Exactly.
And just have it that way, recognizing that if you try to encourage and then try to force it upon, we may have a lawsuit.
Yeah, I'm not going to do that, I'm not worried about that.
And hopefully future mayors agree.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, I understand your intent, but so far, so good. We have a pretty orderly group of citizens, and if something is that hot, then everybody should, just for the therapeutic release, be able to speak what's on their mind. Also, people who might come from the same community might not all agree, so they could say, I'm from, you know, community A, I don't agree with our leaders here, or whatever, so that people do have that freedom that, you know.
I agree. Now, remember, I modified it also, we had the language citizens, it's now members of the public. So understand that your meeting, it does not necessarily mean that it is going to be residents, you know, because the statute requires you, before, there was always the question, can you restrict and have it only people that live in city of Benita Springs? And the answer, based on the new statute, is clearly no.
Well, we've always, we've always treated it that way.
Right.
Okay, so, so counsel, with your permission, would it be all right for her to go ahead and, and change this and advertise it in a way that, craft this and bring it back for the first reading, to just change those very few items that we need to do to comply with that? Would that be all right?
What if we just remove D?
I would encourage you to have some kind of policy dealing with factions, and even if it's a policy of, we're going to try to encourage if the meeting looks like it might be, but not mandate.
I think we just said not to have D.
If you don't have D at all, the concern I have is if you try to make that encouragement and it looks like it's a strong arm, I'm still going to have a lawsuit, because of the new statute, and the new statute, I know, but remember, this is where people do sue is, when they feel that they have not been able to talk, and even if you allow everyone to talk.
But Audrey, there's, there's 100 different ways that we can get sued.
I understand that, but this is a new.
We have every opportunity, every meeting, to screw up in that regard.
Yes, sir, you're right, but this is a new lawsuit with a new clause of action.
And I appreciate, I appreciate your concern, and if, if you would just go ahead and write it up like I think that we're indicating at this particular point in time.
Let me make sure I understand, so just remove D and it's entirely?
Yes.
Yes. And, Mayor, could we not just accept what we have here now and just move it along?
Actually, I did not schedule it for public hearing. Normally, I would, because it is a resolution, so it would be.
Sure, yes ma'am.
Again, again, counsel, if you would allow her to go ahead and just revise this to where it adds what we legally need to have.
Let's go do it.
And, and then, if you bring it back, you have my blessing to convince me in the meantime that there is a reason that we need to add something else, but until then, we'll just go ahead and, and rest of counsel as well.
As long as you understand the consequence, so.
All right, good.
You don't need a motion.
Yes.
All right, yeah, we don't need a motion, right, you can go ahead, yeah.
No, I have direction, thank you.
Good. I appreciate your concerns, trying to keep us out of trouble, I know.
Keep us out.
Thank you.
And that is the reason why I wanted to schedule it for conversation rather than approval.
And, well, we had a doozy, didn't we?
You guys are good. Okay.
Okay, do you have anything else for us?
I just wish to tell everyone Happy New Year, as far as.
Happy Rosh Hashanah.
Thank you.
Rosh Hashanah.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We only have one item this evening, it has to do with the landscaping proposal that actually Mr. Forbes had talked about. John?
You all know by now that you've gotten your packets for Monday night's first budget hearing. The way we've got the agenda laid out for the budget hearing, we anticipate that a large portion of the conversation may focus on landscaping options that you discussed at the workshop. In order to facilitate that conversation, I've got a handout, again, this is not for discussion tonight, but for discussion Monday night at the hearing, but we wanted to distribute this information to you. It is just a very high-level summary of what you will be hearing more about Monday night with regard to the options that we've put together, hopefully following your direction about the landscaping of the medians and right-of-ways. There are some numbers that deal with the most enhanced version of those options, and we've also included some options, and staff will be available, obviously, between now and Monday to talk to you individually if you have any questions about that. Again, this is not the complete packet that you'll be getting Monday night, but we hopefully make some of the conversation Monday a little more productive by giving you a head start on it. So I'll be distributing that tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Carl? Good? Good, okay. We are to mayor and council member items. It says, approved resolution adopting member to the city of Benita Springs Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. Councilwoman Martin?
Yes. Very quickly, I'd like to just make the motion to approve the appointment of Sarah Baker to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Board, and also, just as an FYI, let everyone know that she also sits on the county board. So this is awesome that she will be our local representative and also, you know, attend all the county meetings.
Very nice. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye, can I ask?
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slecta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, and let's see, let's go to start.
Mayor, I had a question, I missed it.
Go ahead.
Could we get a list of the people that are on the committee?
On the bicycle?
Bicycle committee? Okay. I think everybody should get that.
Could I have a list of all the committees? Because we used to get an update of that, and we haven't had that for a long time.
I think they're on your city phones directory. They should, they keep that updated regularly, whatever you want.
All right, I'm sure if you check in with the city clerk, she can give you.
Thank you.
It's a paper. Okay?
I don't like paper.
All right, good. And Bill, while you're at it, do you have anything else for us tonight? What do you got for us?
Just to let everybody know in the audience that the density reduction groundwater discussion from Barack Associates will be on Tuesday evening at 5:00, 5:30. Yep. It'll also be televised, and all I can tell you is that the packet is heavy. Matter of fact, it's, you've got to be prepared to pick it up. I'll leave it at that, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Martha, what do you have for us?
I guess he's working out to do that. Nice job, Bill. I went to Sanibel for the Save the Bay rally in Clueston, got to meet people who are much smarter than I am about water and concerned, just as concerned as we are. Also went out to discuss with folks at the Tween Water Inn at a presentation that was going on out there, but it just rained too much, so I didn't make it, but I did get the materials, and I think I shared those with you. Going out, driving out to Clueston, driving home, I've gone out there different times of the year. This time of the year, the sugarcane's coming up, it is just miles and miles and miles, and I could go on about 50 miles worth of sugarcane, maybe more, 70. There is an option for the state to buy that land by the mid-part of October, it's a three-year option, and that's how the water's going to get south, because this bridge for the Tameyammy Trail is about 10 miles shorter than what they proposed before, but it's, it's getting there, right? But we need to get that water to the south, so I don't know if we could prepare a letter, I'm sorry I did not put this on the agenda, but, I don't know, encourage the governor to exercise that option. When he came into office, he unexercised that option, but I don't know if they could find a way to do that. I don't know how the water's going to get south, but I would like at least to have this council express their opinion on that. Second, anyhow, met some great people. I was the only person who was the elected person from the west coast. There were tons of people from the east coast who were in Clueston, and people from Clueston, the mayor of Clueston, the, one of the county commissioners who we work with over on this side sometimes, just great folks, lots of different people, but a lot of residents from our area went. So, I'll come back to that. But on the, on the what's going on report, there were discussions with architect Sam, oh my God, I'm having a blank.
Vincent.
Thank you, very good, he lives in my neighborhood, Sam Vincent, about facade renovations and improvements on the community hall. And now that we've just bought this, or we're buying this piece of property, do we need to invest more money in the community hall? That's just a question I have, because, I mean, unless it's like painting it to make it look like different, I don't know that we should invest so much money there. My opinion only. Okay. I mean, if it's something that's coming down, why put more on it, so. But back to the letter to the governor, does, do you need to have more information about that, what that option is, or how you feel about that?
Why don't you, if you would, Martha, it's probably a good idea for us to go ahead and chime in, as, as a lot of the other communities have. Carl, can we allow Carl to go ahead and kind of paste together a letter?
Surely.
Supporting, you know, the solutions of.
Yes.
Would that be all right?
Yes, and I'll look for your, I'll look for your assistance on that, councilwoman.
Would that be all right?
I'd be more than happy.
Is this for the mayor's signature?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the three-year option on the sugar land that's out there that, if we don't purchase now, the price goes up exorbitantly high, up until 2021, and if that, if you let that happen, it's probably going to happen, but at least we should weigh in on that. So, thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate it, and that's it. Everybody have a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Peter, what do you got here for us today?
Well, Happy September 4th to everybody. I, I say that in jest, as I was joking with my son this morning, today is the last day that he will ever be 10 years old. He will be 11 tomorrow, so.
Ooh.
Happy birthday, son. Petey, I love you. Happy birthday, one day early. My son, daughter, and wife were actually at the Benita Springs Library yesterday. They've been given the task that they have to read 50 books this year, which, that's aggressive. I mean, I think it's great, I'm all for it, but they were at the library yesterday, and, you know, we've had this discussion on the library, and I'd like to continue this discussion. Councilman Longkart has done great work, John Gucciardo's done fantastic work, Carl has listened to me longer than he probably cares to listen to me on this, so I'd like to, and I actually am sorry that I didn't put this on the agenda as well, but I've spoken with elected officials around the county, and I'd like to get a head nod, or if it's okay with the city council, to move ahead and direct staff, we've, you know, we've bantered these numbers around, but the reality is, the citizens and the taxpayers of Benita Springs have spent somewhere in the neighborhood of $47 million to the library system. Nothing even resembling coming close to that number has come back to us. We have, you know, I don't know how we go about this exactly, but I would just like to move forward with the idea to allow staff to get a clear answer that despite my numerous phone calls to numerous people, whether we would be penalized from withdrawing from the county system. I've heard that we would be penalized, I've heard that we would not be penalized, I've heard that you could withdraw, pay a reduced fee, I mean, I've heard a lot of different answers, but we don't have a clear answer. In fact, as early as, or as recently as late this afternoon, we don't have a clear answer on this. We have been in contact with Supervisor of Elections Sharon Harrington, indicating that if we did want to make this a ballot issue for the citizens of Benita Springs, to let them decide, let the taxpayers of Benita Springs decide how they would like to spend their library money, that we do have time, we don't have a lot of time, but we do have time to get that on the ballot, that would increase the January election from about $40,000 to $80,000 or so, or $3 per voter. Now, that's $40,000 that you know from my fiscal mouth I don't want to spend. The reality is, we're looking at $47 million, and my wife and kids were just at that library yesterday, we've all been to that library. Does that look like $47 million to you, or anything close thereof? So, with, with that, I guess I would just like to see if it would be okay to flush out a few more answers here, ask a few more questions and get a few more answers, and potentially move forward with this, if we get the answers that make economic sense for Benita Springs.
Pete, can we, we asked John, what, give us the, what's the last update on the current library situation that, that Bill and the committee had worked on and that the county had presented? Where are they at right now?
We, we've been working with the county library staff as they go through their budget process at the county level, and they have been given, obviously, nothing is, is official until they go through their budget hearings finally, but through the workshop process, they have been given an increase in the county library millage rate. The increase is significant and should be sufficient enough for the library, county library system to maintain its operating levels, with certain reduction that they have made, not to this library, however, but certain reductions in their operating hours in other facilities. But they will be able to operate without running a deficit, and also to accumulate additional dollars for capital projects. They anticipate that our project and the North Fort Myers project will be able to be funded over a 10-year period, not a five-year period as we originally had hoped, but a 10-year period. But it is at least moving in the right direction. In addition, county library staff tells us that they're confident that they're going to have dollars actually in the current year budget and carry it over to the next year budget to fund three different studies. One would be a county-wide needs study, needs assessment, and the other two studies would be basically facilities, planning studies for the Benita Project and the North Fort Myers Project. So, at least from the county library staff perspective, it's a given that there are needs in Benita Springs and North Fort Myers, the rest of the county needs to go through a needs assessment, see what else might be out there. And they're confident they're going to have the dollars to go ahead with those planning studies.
All right, and, and further towards Peter's point there about the unanswered questions, have, we have kind of opined before that, that we can't, without the county's permission, unplug ourselves from the regional system? That has been, I think, was that your opinion at one time, or?
As far as dual taxation purposes, there is ample case law that it would, you know, if the county could still tax us politically, you can get out, but that would require the county to opt.
So they have the.
It's discretionary on the part of the county.
It's discretionary on their part, so it would take political will on their part to allow us to depart from the system.
That's right.
So that's probably the, the bigger question, would they allow, go ahead.
I, I think maybe just for clarification purposes, and I haven't discussed this with Audrey, so Audrey, tell me if I'm wrong here, but I think we could always opt out on our own, it's whether or not we could opt out without needing to continue to pay.
Well, that's what, yeah.
But there is a difference there. We could always opt out on our, unilaterally.
Yeah.
Whether or not we could opt out unilaterally and, you know, cease to pay that millage rate is the question, and I think what Audrey's saying is that the county would have to let us out of the payment part of it.
Mayor? Right, we could always have additional services and pay for those services, the question is.
Yeah, the question is, yeah.
Having a city library system as opposed to the county library system with the way the state law is structured, and the way dual, the issue's dual taxation, can the city, you know, supplant the county's system and then say, county, you cannot, you know, charge us? us." And we would not be the first city contemplating that. And there is ample cases. And I provided that to the city manager the other day. I previously had written memorandums on it with those cases. It is fact dependent. And again, if the county wants to be kind and let us out politically, that's possible too.
Well, and then the other side of the question is, is the part we don't have is, would we be able to run our library system ourselves? How much would it cost us to do that ourselves? Especially if we're on the cusp of them going ahead and saying, "Okay, we're gonna build you a library." And then all of a sudden, we say, "Well, guess what? We're not gonna play anymore." Just at the time when they were gonna do that, well, then how long would it take us to do it? So you're right. There is a great deal of information to consider before you even get to that referendum process. Yeah, go ahead, Martha.
Mayor, I've been, I've been in favor of this independent library thing for a long time because I've watched the whittling away of services and the increasing of, well, they've reduced the taxes for the last couple of years, but at the sacrifice of operating good libraries or building good ones, I heard it's gonna get paid for over 10 years, but it's not gonna be like for five years, which is another like $50 million that we're gonna pay into the tax system to get the library. Now, we just talked about a piece of property possibility. Another reason that our task force was concerned and said, "Well, let's just stick with the program, stay with the library," was because the interlibrary loan program, that's gone. I saw Sheldon Kakes, I forgot to report that. I went up to the Board of County Commissioners' meeting last week on the fertilizer education program, which is done. We got that passed. But Sheldon told me that it was gone, that they're not gonna have that.
Can I try to clarify that? Because I have gone through this.
No, I have one more.
I have gone through this specifically with Sheldon. The lending program that they are terminating as of October 1 does not have to do with the internal county library system. There is still a lending program within the county library system that Benita Springs is part of. The lending program that they're referring to is one that talks about materials coming and going from outside of the county library system, which frankly, Sheldon tells me is not, I mean, it's obviously a piece of the, of the services they provide now that they appreciate and value, but it's not the most valued and the most used asset that they have.
Well, I use that a lot because it was a cool way to get books without spending a lot of money. But the last thing is, politically, you run this referendum when there are three county commissioners running for office, and I bet you get let out of the, you get let out of the taxing system. Because they probably all say, "Oh, yeah, I'm for letting you guys go." And then they wanna get elected. So there you go.
Bill, I'm kinda curious here from you because you worked closely with that committee. And the last heard, I heard about the committee is they wanted to work with the county until they couldn't.
That's exactly right. And of course, since the beginning, which goes back some years, I really know this pretty good. If, under the current situation, based on what the budget projections are in the county this year, we're gonna increase our contribution to the county about 4.3 million from 2.4 from this year, because the mill rate's gonna go to, well, it's not the final, but it's 59 cents from 35. And if you look at the history of this thing, which was said some 40 some odd million, it's a big number. And then you look at the county budget in past history of running the library system. They've been running an operating deficit of over $7 million. I don't know how far back it goes, but it's over $7 million. In the current county budget, the statistics that have been available so far, they're only going to reduce the cost of, of the library operating budget by $1.3 million this year, the new year, if that, if the, all the mill rates are okayed by the county commissioners. It almost seems like a, it's like an uphill battle, but you can't get any traction. It's, you keep slipping back further. And I love to work, I love to work with people, but sometimes you get to a point where you have to make a decision. And the only way, in my opinion, that the city could bring it in-house is we must be relieved of the costs that we're spending now. Could we do it in-house? Yes. But we have to be relieved. And we should also be able to, well, I see, I don't know how they could give us a lump sum of money since their operating budget currently and going forward is not sufficient to, it's really a sad situation. I don't know what else to say. It's, it's really sad that we're at this point. And, but the Library Task Force Committee, the citizens that were on it, wanted to continue with the county. Personally, me, I would've tried to get out three years ago, or four years ago. However, working with the citizens, they, they should have their voice too. And I listened to it, and I said, "Okay." But now, after seeing the county situation, not only in the library, but there's other things, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. And I really think we are in a position that we can, we could handle it very easily, but we must be relieved of that enormous sum of money that we do send to the library.
Carl, let me ask you a question, and I'll come back to Peter here. I mean, Carl, if, if the council were, let's say, a city, any city were interested in doing such a thing, there are a few steps we would have to go through so far as figuring out, you know, you just don't decide, "We're gonna go into the library business and just do it." I mean, of course, you would have to figure out what all is entailed in doing that. What would some of the steps be in, before we had enough information to know whether we actually wanted to be government light, but we wanted to go into the library business? I mean, I mean, there's a great deal of information to be gathered to do that.
Well, I think so. Obviously, the answer to the question about whether or not they would let us out without penalty is a key question here for a number of the council members that have spoken tonight. I understand that. But also, I think we would have to have a study completed with regards to what that library would look like, what kind of services would be offered, especially in the years of, you know, electronics, and whether or not hardcover books are viable anymore or will be 10 years down the road. So I think that we would have to get some additional information with regards to that. Part of that would have to be a financial feasibility study, what it would take to run the library efficiently and effectively, what that would mean to our millage rate. But again, if, if we were let out of the millage from the county, then of course, we would have room to be able to move with, within that. So there's a number of questions there. I will share with the council right now that our information from, from Sharon Harrington, the supervisor of elections, was that if you wanted to try to put this on the ballot for January, that she would have to know by October 1. Okay? Which means we have one council meeting between now and then in order to put it on the ballot. So the question is, do we, what will our direction be this evening? Will it be to study this further, or will it be to actually move forward with trying to craft a resolution to instruct the supervisor of election to put it on for January, as well as craft an ordinance that's going to be working on the wording on the ballot itself? And so there's a lot of pieces in play here, but we look for your direction.
Okay. Yeah, Pete, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, you know, I guess in a way, I kinda likened this to when we became a city in 2000. I wasn't here. There was a lot of unanswered questions. Did we know it was gonna be good? Did we know it was gonna be bad? No. But guess what? We decided to do it. Are there unanswered questions here? You bet there are. But you know what? There's unanswered questions for this $47 million too. So I don't continue, I don't buy into the theory of throwing good money after bad money. Enough's enough. Guess what? That is not a $47 million library. And I've also heard that this could take 10 years. I've also heard that it could be longer than that. And I've also heard, I love my friends up in North Fort Myers. Our sheriff, Scott, comes from North Fort Myers. Congressman Trey Radel, District Director Matt Pousaterry comes from North Fort Myers. And there's some great fishing up there. But you know what? One thing I don't want to do is be second in line behind North Fort Myers and waiting year after year after year for a library. This is in our control, and I say we grab it.
Okay. Now, Martha, did you have something?
Yeah. And I wouldn't be opposed, I'm for this. But also, I know Sanibel, you know, Gary actually did this little number with the county with Sanibel. He said, you know, "We will participate in the regional library system." And I don't think that's unreasonable to say, you know, "We wanna have our own," because they're not gonna wanna let go of everything. They're gonna say, "You know, that's South County Lysbury. That, that serves a whole bunch of people in Benita," even though they have a Benita address and they probably live in the Bronx. But, okay. There is a regional library system. I mean, if we have to make a small contribution of that, that's not blowing me away. But really, this is, this is just getting worse. You know, it, it just keeps going on and on. Since 1992, we had some renovations there. That's it. They've been collecting money forever on our library and not giving us anything for it. And wonderful people who are working in the library, love them. They live in District 5. Okay. But the librarian herself does. And I know she's not too happy with this prospect, but I really think it's time for a quality city to have a quality library. And I think we can do this. I think we can do it. I've read the legal stuff on that about, they do provide the services. So, I mean, they, they don't have a reason to take away the taxation. But, you know, they can be reasonable.
Would, you want a straw, and this goes back to the ballot question a little bit. Would you want a straw ballot, meaning it's not binding at this point? Because again, if it's a ballot question for January, first of all, that's a city election. So it's, what Councilman Simmons is asking is that it become a citywide as opposed to 1, 3, and 5 going for election. And typically, when the people don't actually vote for someone, they don't always come in for the measure unless they have an interest in it. Would you want that to be a straw ballot? And if you did want it to be a straw ballot, and you recognize that there's a different cost associated, would you want it to be kind of a contingent straw ballot? If Lee County agrees to remove Benita Springs from the library tax, would you want Benita Springs to establish a municipal library independent from Lee County's library system?
However we word that.
Well, yes. And, but is that what?
Yeah, yeah. Hold on a second. Okay. We get it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Steve.
I'll do respect everybody else. Councilman Longcard's the one with all the, all the knowledge on this. Why are we trying to decide what he already has all the facts of? Where do you wanna go on this, Councilman? Well, seeing where the county is financially totally, it's, it's not a very pleasant, if I was in a boardroom, the Board of, the Board of Directors would have probably made changes. Of course, that has to do with elected officials, but.
Yeah, those guys, huh?
I've always felt all along that, but, but here again, the most important thing is, the county has, has gotten so much from us in total dollars that they actually, they don't even have the wherewithal to give us a lump sum back now or in the future based on their current circumstances, as I see it. And I'm not trying to pick on them. It's just that these are the facts. They're, they're numbers, not my numbers. And the only way we can accomplish it is obviously be removed, be able to get out of the system. But then the other thing is, we would not have any capital, other than the capital we're saving by not being in the system, and that would be not enough to build a library without, without debt financing. And I don't know if I wanna go that way. But it's a substantial number this coming year. It's gonna go, and of course, what's gonna happen next year, that amount assessed evaluations are gonna be higher. So we'll be up where we were six or seven years ago when it was, we were giving them over $5 million a year. And the library cost, by the way, has been running, using their number, about 1.4 million to run the library.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna express a couple of things.
You know, we're, we're pushing the county to the backs of the law on this referendum. So I wanna know where you really are on this thing. So yes, no? I would definitely, well, I would definitely think that we should, we should consider the, let's see what the people say. I think that's the most important thing.
Thanks.
If the people wanna do it, then it's okay. And then, of course, then we can plan our strategies. And hopefully, I hope the county comes through this whole thing they're going through because it's, I'm glad I'm on this council.
Well, all right. I'm gonna interject something here. I don't have any problem with, with doing a referendum. It's just the timing that, that's problematic for me. It's just my own opinion on this. I, I really don't wanna go to the people and, and ask them a question when I haven't even done a feasibility study on it. And I know that, you know, you probably do the math in your head and whatever, and they've been taking money from us for a long time and yada, yada, yada. We've been saying that for a long time. I know all that. But for me to go there and, and to, and to ask the people, "Hey, do you wanna start a library?" It's kinda like, "Hey, do you, do you want free chicken?" Or, you know, I mean, I, I really don't wanna put up something in front of them unless we've done all the homework. We know exactly what it's gonna cost. Even if you go to form a city, you do a feasibility study to see if, what the taxes are gonna be, what the form is gonna be, what are the ins and outs, who are you gonna partner with in the library system? Are you just gonna go it alone? And the books you have, are the books you have? Are you gonna partner with Fort Myers Beach? Are you gonna partner with the independents? There are a lot of questions answered. You're not gonna get it done by October 1. You're not gonna get it done. Plus, if you're gonna have a referendum, you need to have it when there's a city, you need to be on that fourth year rotation so that everybody in the city is gonna end up at the polls. And, well, everybody who's gonna vote is gonna end up at the polls in every district. They're not gonna have to go to the polls to vote on a library referendum, and that's the only reason for them to go, because they're not gonna show up. And the only thing worse than, than, than not going to the people is going to the people and having 1% of the people make the decision. That's what you don't wanna have. So, I mean, Peter, I think it's a, it's a great idea to ask the question, but we got a lot of homework. We've got a year or two of homework to do. I know that for a fact. If we're gonna do this in a businesslike fashion, and we're gonna do it in a way that's gonna be, at least give all the information to everybody that they deserve, it's gonna take some time to do this. But that's me.
Well, can I ask Mr. Schwing, how long will it take to do something like that?
A year or two, I think that's what the mayor said.
So you wanna make a?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, we, we have not, we have not been looking at this issue. And I, I would prefer not to answer at this point because it would be total speculation at this point.
Mayor?
Total speculation.
I respect that.
But I, but I, but I also would tell you that a feasibility study alone, okay, I mean, if you're looking at the numbers the county's looking at, unless you want staff sitting around trying to figure it out, you'd be looking at a $50,000 study, okay, for a library, to build one, and what it would be for this particular area.
Yeah. Not only build, build, run, finance.
Yes, the whole thing. That's right.
That's a big responsibility.
That's right.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Mayor?
Well, it's up to the council to decide which way to go. I, all I know is that something good will come out of this eventually, I hope, in some years. Thanks.
Mayor?
Yes, Martha.
Does, um, does it have to be on a municipal timetable, or could it be in next August or next November for the primary then in August, or the November general, November general election, you're gonna get a lot more people because of the midterms? But my understanding is maybe we don't push for January. We do some work to get, you know, up to that point. But I'd like, I'd like to decide that we're gonna at least have a referendum by that time. Could you find out before the next meeting? But, you know, the more we stay in this never-ending cavalcade of not getting back, and I don't mind, I don't mind contributing fairly to the regional library system because sometimes I'm in Fort Myers and I have to run into the library, or, you know, they have something that you don't have down here. That's fine. Public libraries are important, and I, I support them. But for the amount of money that we're getting taxed here, and it seems to always go somewhere else, just really is disturbing. It's sort of a remnant of the old, and I'd like to see the new. I don't think that's gonna happen. So I don't want this to go off the table, Bill.
Right.
I, in fact, I even believe that just, you know, go ahead and have the referendum, create your own library, even if the county doesn't allow you to get out of their taxing system.
Oh, yeah.
At first, let me tell you why. Unless you can get a deal with them, because it's embarrassing for them for double taxation. That's one thing. That would be a great political issue for them. They have to drop it to get, to get elected.
Yeah. Why don't, why don't we do this as part, part of our budget hearings that are coming up and stuff like that? Let's go ahead and see if we can't collect other information. And, and we're gonna have to challenge ourselves. The question you need to get a commitment from, from the county commissioner, are you gonna let us loose?
Mm-mm.
And I agree with Bill. If they're not gonna let us loose, I mean, you're not gonna start your own library if you're gonna have to pay twice for it. You're just not gonna do it. I mean, it, that, we can't do that. I mean, I mean, that's, that's, that would be the definition, I think, of craziness, would be to be paying them the same amount of money that we're complaining about, and then paying that much again to do it ourselves.
That's right.
Yeah. I don't think we're gonna do that. So why don't we go ahead and go ahead and ask the question of the commissioners? Keep doing your political work like, you know, you're both good at. If, if they're gonna let us loose, well, then we can at least, okay. If we're gonna get let loose, let's see what it's gonna cost us. Then we can give our people instructions, find out what it's gonna cost to do the library, and let's see if we do want loose. How about that?
Sounds fun.
And Mayor, and, and guys, even with the suggestion that it's kind of butter their path, that if we pay just a little portion for a regional library system, you know, so that they get some for their unincorporated area and we take care of ours, just like we do.
We'll discuss later. That's, that's.
Okay. But, but anyway, try to do that political homework.
And, and what's the best way to go about that? I mean, I'm happy to carry that, work with the team, let council, whatever, I just, so that we're organized the way that we go about it.
I, I think you gotta go up there and I think you have to go, as in, you know, individual council people, go up there and knock on the door.
We've been there before.
Oh, yeah. Go up there and knock on the door.
Glad to do it.
I've got no problem with that. I don't think council has any problem with that, with asking the question.
Yeah.
And if, if they won't entertain that question, or, you know, and I'll be glad to ask it too, for you, on the council's behalf, if you want to. If, if, you know, we've, we've got this discrepancy, council is expressing some interest in going alone, are you gonna let us cut us loose? Then at least you can get them talking about it.
Right. Happy to make those calls as well.
Yeah, me too.
Carl?
Okay. So just for clarification, at this point in time, the one step that's gonna be taken is to try to find an answer from the county, is whether they will allow us out of the system.
There you go. There you go.
Without penalty. And we will stand by and wait further instructions.
I think that's...
Pending that answer. Is that correct?
I think that's good.
With a small asterisk. Withdraw, and like Martha had said, maybe a small fee for the regional. But we're talking a lot of money here, so, I mean, we need to look at some real hard numbers here, because there are a lot of zeros with these numbers we're talking about.
Well, I just caution you to go ahead and offer up your strategy before you get into negotiations there, because what you don't want to do is end up having a net-net loss the same...
Of course.
Even if you're in the same situation, if we're going to be in the same fiscal situation, I'd rather them do it. I mean, if we're going to end up in the same situation by paying them a little money and then us putting into it. So why don't we do that? Let's find out if they're... What the terms... If they're like, "You know what? Go ahead." Well, then, great. Fine, whatever. But... And let's go ahead and allow our staff to go ahead and be sure of their information, too. But what we don't want to do, let's be very careful, and then we'll move along here. Let's be very careful that... Because they are in the process of trying to... They are, I think, in good faith, the staff. They are in the process of trying to work us in and get us a library. Let's not be so aggressive with this that they say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, why should we be working on this if you guys are bailing out?" So be careful what we ask for there.
Yep.
So, anyway. John, have you got anything before we go on? Okay, let's... We've all got our homework here. Okay. All right, if we can, let's see. Steve, what do you got for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, our 9/11 services will start at 6:00 PM at the Lyles Hotel. And also, I'm sure all of us are aware, the tensions in the Middle East. And we hope that our friend, good friends in Israel, will have a peaceful Rosh Hashanah. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Very nice. Janet?
Yep, River Fest, Saturday, October 19th. And then also, I know Laura Taylor sent out an email invitation to all of you, that she is our host leader for Benita Government Day for Leadership, and that is this Friday. And we're doing a mock city council meeting, and we would love to have everybody there to help the students along the way with that mock council meeting. So...
I'm so good at mocking.
It's 11 o'clock on Friday. Thanks.
I told Carl, I said, "You know what? Every meeting's a mock meeting here." Anyway, go ahead. Sorry.
There you go. That's okay.
Yeah. How about it?
All right. Thanks, Mandy Martin, for your work with Benita Assistance Office, Food Drive. A ton of... Literally, a ton of food. I am so disappointed we let the code enforcement people sneak up on us.
Oh, no. That was purposeful. Did you see what they did there?
Oh, yeah.
They sandbagged us.
Oh, yeah. Ain't happening again.
Oh, it won't happen next year.
No, no.
Sneaky.
Thank you, Mandy. It was a great idea and worked so well. I'm proud to work with the city government that can do that sort of thing. To follow up on Councilman Simon's question, I had talked with the city manager about using the community hall as an example of what we would expect a building to look like downtown. Pavers, landscaping, paint, awnings, and that sort of thing. Particularly since we're having two national art festival events down here this coming season, it'd be very appropriate for us to make that place look nice. And I would like to follow up on that, if we may, in budget time or when.
It's in the budget.
Great. We talk about specifics at that time, I guess. That's fine.
I don't think we know the specifics yet.
Good point. We need to be ready for that.
Yeah. And I had a request from the Rotary Clubs of Benita Springs, both clubs, the community gardens, they want to do a ribbon cutting for the community gardens out at YMCA. They want to make it available to the city council members and are asking, and I'll ask the city manager to coordinate it, to come up with the best time, best day to do that ribbon cutting, to do that opening of the community gardens. So, if I may do that, please. And I was going to thank the city manager for setting up a Bring Your Children to Work Day. Both my children were here, but they got so bored, they left. I guess it's recess. I'm not sure what happened here.
My kids did that to me when they were 18. They left, and they haven't been back since.
Did that happen to me?
They're 34 now.
Hey, maybe it won't come back. Who knew? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir. Just a couple of things there. First of all, you've all got a letter kind of pre-signed by me that I'm going to ask you permission to send out. Our good people in Washington, our legislators in Washington, were kind enough to try to work and try to fix the flood insurance problem for us. And so they developed the Bigger Waters National Flood Insurance and promptly made it to where nobody could afford insurance on... Who live near the water. And so, John, give us a little background on what we plan on sending here in this letter.
We've been following the evolution of this act and its impacts, and trying to gauge the impacts on the residents in Benita Springs for quite some time. We were not confident that we had any ability to kind of stand in the way and keep this from becoming implemented fully until just recently. We had prepared a kind of an educational outreach vehicle for our residents so that we could at least prepare them for what might be coming down the line, and we've got that up and running. But recent events have showed that other people are now aware of the possible implications of this act. There is action being taken at the senate level and the house level, and coming from different parts of the country, New York, New Jersey, California, and to a certain extent, Florida. You would think that our senators would have had more of an active role than they have to this point, but what we're trying to do is to encourage them to step up a little bit. The Board of County Commissioners have written a letter very similar to the one we've prepared for the mayor. The town of Fort Myers Beach has issued a resolution basically saying what we're asking for the senators to do, which is to step in and at least block implementation of some of the aspects of this act until an affordability or viability study can be done, if not to stop it in its tracks outright. This act, I think, was probably well-intentioned. They did it for the purposes of making the National Flood Insurance Program more economically sustainable. But what I suspect is that they looked at the end product, how much money they needed to generate, and worked backwards from there without necessarily gauging the impacts on the payers. And that is a recipe for catastrophe with some people. I've got a map here that shows the special flood hazard area in Benita Springs. It is a much larger area than most people suspect it is. And there are other communities, in fact, that are impacted even to a greater extent than we are. Those properties that are currently under flood insurance in that area could see a gradual increase in their premiums or an immediate increase in their premiums under other circumstances. I won't go into the details, but it could be immediate, and it could be dramatic. We heard testimony today at a meeting I had at the Chamber of Commerce from some people in the insurance business that talked about real-life examples of properties that are undergoing a change of ownerships, which triggers some of these changes, where the premiums go from approximately $2,500 a year to $16,000 a year. Another example was about $4,000 a year up to about $45,000 a year. Now, those are dramatic, but they are real-life examples. So again, what the purpose of the letter is, to try to encourage our senators to step up and support other bills that are being proposed at the senate. Right now, we do know of a bill at the house level that we think is going to be passed when they reconvene, I think on September the 9th. It should be taken up then. One of the sponsors of the bill that is looking to put a halt to the implementation is actually one of the co-sponsors of the original bill. That gives you an idea that there may have been some unintended consequences that they're looking to stop. So we're hoping that that's moving forward on the house side, and we're hoping that Senators Rubio and Nelson can help us move something together similar on the senate side.
So, for the public out there, if... Basically, if you live in Benita Springs, if you live in Florida, and you're not on the ridge there along 27, I'll say, if you're not along there, you need to be concerned about this because these are... This is real, and this is going to be implemented. And it may have been... It may have been unintentional. It was an unintentional thing, but it is going to...
But it's still real.
...revolve around real dollars. So contact your representative. This isn't on the state level. This is something that the Washington DC is doing for us or to us. So we're going to do all we can. So, council, permission to send this letter out?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Absolutely.
With one small change?
Yes. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to mention it. If you look at the letterhead, they've got John Spear on here on the...
Oh, really?
Yes.
I didn't even see that. I'm sorry.
Burn all that paper.
With all due respect. Oh, you know what? Send it with Spear's name. It'll have more weight. Hold much more weight.
You don't want to put your name on there, are you? All right. We'll just pencil you in there. How about that?
There you go.
Mayor, when I was saying...
Could we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second? Any other... Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Simons?
Yes.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slick?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, and everybody, again, for who is listening, take this seriously. Take this seriously.
Yes, it's very serious.
Call your congresspeople, okay?
Mayor, when I was in Cluessin', this was discussed, actually, the people on the west side of the dyke there are an insurance exception area. They don't have to pay flood insurance, just figure that one out. But with this bill, they will have $15,000... These are just your, you know, your regular, you know, Joe, Jane, six-pack kind of homes. $15,000 for flood insurance, that's going to wipe out communities, so we can't let this happen.
All right. Couple other things I got there. I had the opportunity to be part of the Hertz welcome team at the high end. It went really well. I got to meet the person who was responsible for hiring everyone there to put in that building, having to hire, you know, next to 800 people. And she's in a bit of a panic. That's a lot of people to hire. So, yeah, we struck a relationship up. We've been able to get Christine Ross and the EDC and everybody with them. I think it's going to be... Work out really good for Benita. We've encouraged them to participate in a lot of the functions we're going to be having. Set up a booth at the Taste of Benita and everything else like that, so they can do their recruiting there. So that's going really well. I did have the opportunity to... Was invited to meet with the governor up there. Had a great conversation, got to sit at the table with him, and actually have a conversation about Benita Springs and the things we're doing here. So he is well-aware of all of you and the great work you all do, so it's...
And the hospital, by any chance?
I'm not going to say anything about that.
You mentioned the hospital.
I know. I wasn't going to bug him about anything. I was just going to...
Yeah.
I was there to thank him.
Oh, my God.
So, anyway, yeah, I know. Hey, trust me. Also, we've been meeting with the legislator, our legislative delegation this week about incorporation and annexation issues, amongst other things. And it's been really well-received. We have a great group of legislators, I got to tell you. We've got a great delegation. They're good people. They listen, and they're very cognizant of the complexities of these issues, so... And I think that's about it. And good. There you go. And at this time, approval of minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slick?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simon?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Here we go again. Okay, it's Good News Week. Rick Steinmeier. The county proposing a 22% increase in their rate. Property values in the county has gone up at least 12% or 13%. Cities proposing a 9.7% rate increase. The library is probably 100%. Florida Power and Light, the tax on them has been raised about 50%. The Consumer Price Index was, wow, 1.7%. Now, who's the greedy one in here? I... You're going to be revolt or something. This is ridiculous. I'm home... My mother's homesteaded, and we've got two properties, and even with the homestead, our taxes are proposed to be up 8%. You know, 1.7% Consumer Price Index, I guess that is a mistake or something. I hope you guys can live within your means, as is stated in the beginning of your budget proposal, that you want to live within your means. And that means, don't get mean with us. So, as far as the library, Sanibel has a library, but City of Benita, City of Fort Myers has a library. Why don't you ask them how they do it? They've been doing it for quite a few years. I don't know if Cape Coral has a library or not. Maybe they're in the county system. I know I go... Mom can't see, so we get these books on tape at the library, and the people who work there have been real nice lately and very service, because they've seen me at these meetings and stuff. But they've told me quite frankly, that the city doesn't pay anywhere near how much they're going to get...[1495.76] getting paid right now from the county. Their salaries must be outstanding, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Carolyn Gallagher again. I love books, and I love the library, and I'm all in favor of having a showcase library. Carl was talking about a few things we need to think about when we're getting our facts together, and I thought of a couple other things, I don't know maybe helpful or not, but I'm assuming that we have county people, paid by the county, working in the library. If you're considering changing it, you need to think about their retirement system, may have some bearing.
Go ahead.
Okay. The other thing is, who owns the library, and who owns the books and the media? Would we get them lock, stock, and barrel if we took it over, or would Lee County try to take them back? I don't know. And I do agree with you, Mayor, that we really need to do a good study and get all the facts on the table, because people cannot vote unless they have all the facts together, so. But I do appreciate you looking at, at this issue. I would really love a wonderful new library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Look at you sticking this out.
Pat O'Rourke.
What is up with that?
I'm sure glad, I'm sure glad I stayed. I was talking with Janet earlier, that one of the things, the reason I was glad I stayed is that we were talking about the EDC, the EDC's efforts and so on, and it was an excellent presentation, I was glad to see that. And also, in terms of Hertz and employees, the chairman announced at the, at the airport, when they made their announcement, that they could go as high as 1,700 employees eventually.
Whoa.
So, this is, and, and then, if we're fortunate to get the additional area of Hertz in, in the Cape, that's adding another couple hundred jobs, and it just, it'll start synergizing all of Lee County in terms of that. And the, the point that was made about regionalism, Arthrex, almost 60% of the employees at Arthrex come from Lee County. So, the, the idea that these are two Hertz, and Arthrex are the poster children, in effect, for regionalism in terms of, of having major companies in one county or the other, but benefiting the county they're not in also. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, well said. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. For the record, Kathy McGrath. I don't have any zingers tonight, but Janet mentioned Riverfest on October 19th, and I would just, we had a special events committee meeting yesterday, and there'll be a lot more coming out about that, but I do want to give you a heads up, they're going to have a ribbon cutting that day for our new canoe kayak ramp, and you will be, all be invited. And you're going to be amazed when you see what they've done there with the parking lot, and the boardwalk's going out to it, and the launch itself is just great. And the other thing, I just want to interject as a member of the Friends of the Benita Nature Place, we're always trying to help take a little bit of the burden off of Parks and Rec, and two real good friends who have been with us for four years, Steve and Cindy Trumball, were out there for two days last week with their pressure, pressure cleaner, cleaning the lanai. So, I want to publicly recognize them because they've been great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your name is?
Fred Forbes.
[laughing]
The, I think most of the people that were spoken about, and they're the citizens saying we want to stay in the system, in my case, and I believe a lot of them were this, we were basically told by different legal councils that came in, that it, we couldn't pull out unless the county would let us, and if they did, the odds were we wouldn't get out of paying the tax. Now, that was, with that information, I think it's clear what your decision would be. If that, if that information is incorrect, and I suspicion there's probably some room to negotiate, I'm sure you might get a different answer, so. And I think, I think Peter's right, and I think the mayor's right, I think you can't quite do what you need to do in January, but probably November would be a good time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Alberto Baez. Thank you for your attention. See if we can get this right. We're in the process, as I told you the last time I spoke in front of you, to continue to generate the purchase of property strategically west of where I live, which is west of 41, towards the beach, by investors that will then be seasonally renting them to well-to-do foreigners. In order to do this, utmost productively, we're trying to improve the neighborhood to be more attractive to such tenants. So, we'd like to reduce the burglaries and drug trafficking that are taking place, particularly in the neighborhood where my home sits, which is where we're starting the subject acquisition processes, and to restore the stormwater management system in the city maintained space. We'd like cooperation from the city staff to establish a coherent game plan to complete the Baez-proposed community park, which the city accepted to support us with by purchasing the assemblage of property that some of us realtors worked diligently to put together with a specific purpose of replacing our backyard as the community park in West Benita, and partially facilitate the stormwater management dilemma in our neighborhood, a project which has blatantly been abandoned after the property was purchased, yielding the neighborhood residents a unanimously unwelcome equity debilitating in terms of home value appreciation. Water retention tank on behalf of BSU, instead of the gorgeous equity enhancing community quality of life improvement that we were promised, which is why I invested in calculable sweat equity in making the subject proper viable. We need to restore the stormwater management system in the privately maintained road, the street where my home sits, which doesn't meet code because the final inspections were not done as they should have been. We need to get orientation on how to bring the private road to meet criteria to transfer ownership and maintenance to the city. We need support, we would appreciate your support, for you to support the residents with enforcement of corrective maintenance to bring the properties up to code, avoid additional erosion, and improve the aesthetics. Restore the animosity among the neighbors due to the soap operas provoked by the code enforcement and law enforcement, who in lieu professionally and politely collaborating in the processes to bring the subject structural deficits up to code, in the case of code enforcement, and wrongfully incarcerated the neighborhood watch director with fabricated charges, and then requesting their dismissal when they found themselves incapable of prosecuting them in the case of law enforcement. The cooperation from the city staff to establish a coherent game plan to enforce the restoration of the incompetently installed pipes from our city-owned cleanouts, per easement, to the main access copular, to the plumbing infrastructure of our homes, a project for which BSU was retained as a general contractor, and was incompetently installed by a plumbing subcontractor who now refuses to be hired by the homeowners to bring the installation up to the corresponding construction code, because it has become painfully obvious that the reason why the installation is not conforming is because no permits were pulled. As our requests for the final inspection, to which we have a right, as they are a matter of public record, have gone to defiant deaf ears that are refusing to comply because apparently the final inspections are unexisted. I will close by saying the fact.
You all are aware of what I have recorded.
Hereof, and as a result of that, you have a civic obligation, even if it's not as your obligation as paid elected officials, to move, to exercise your due diligence, to either confirm or find my hereby-delivered allegations as indeed valid.
Thank you very much, and I, I'll get a transcript of what you said, and I will personally answer your questions for you.
Many thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, thank you everyone for your patience, and, well, nice conversation, great conversation. All right.